Okay. Call to order. Good evening and welcome to the... Oh, I don't think it's April 17th. I think I have the wrong thing. May 8th. May 8th, meeting of the Laguna Beach Unified School District Board of Education. Open session is called to order at 6:05. On Saturday, the Board of Trustees will interview an excellent pool of candidates for our new superintendent. When we complete the full interview process and have selected our finalist with the terms of the contract reviewed, we will then work on the final contract through our legal counsel. We take no formal action until this part of the process is complete. Then we will take action to appoint the new superintendent and ratify the contract either at the regular meeting of the Board, which will either be the end of May meeting or the first meeting in June. If you are a student who wishes to speak to an item, please write "student" at the top of your card so you can speak first and don't have to wait the entire meeting. I'd like to outline the timing process for our speakers because we have seven speakers for this part. Each speaker will have three minutes to deliver their remarks. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, the timer will change colors. As a gentle reminder, your time's almost up. At the 3-minute mark, your time will officially end and you will hear one bell. If you have not finished speaking, you will be given an additional 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. At the end of this 30 seconds, the microphone will automatically shut off and we kindly ask you to take your seat. In the event there are more than six cards for any agenda item, the time allotted to speak may be adjusted accordingly. Okay.
President Perry, the bell broke today, so I will make a little noise.
Okay, well, ding. Well, yeah, ding.
You're gonna see some shenanigans tonight.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, pledge of allegiance. Kate, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no report out of closed session. No action was taken. Public comment now for items not on the agenda but within the subject matter or the jurisdiction of the Board. If you would like to speak at this time, please make sure your card is here. We will not take any late cards. Okay? Clerk Hills?
Do I understand that there's a member of the Board who wants to make a statement?
In her capacity as a member of the community, not in her capacity as a Board member.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Sheri Morgan. I'm standing before you tonight, speaking to you as a parent. I am standing here humbly because I'm sure that there are people here that were hoping that they could beat me to this, but I would like to extend my apologies to anyone that was at the... The adults that were at the high school PTA meetings. I don't believe there was any students there. At the high school PTA meeting on Monday, I dropped an F-bomb. Sorry, my apologies. And I do mean that sincerely. It was certainly not something I planned to walk in the room to say. It was in relation to my disappointment in the failure to recognize 10 of our beautiful theater students that have really struggled to get the recognition from the district that they deserve. Our plays aren't on our website. Our plays are not promoted in our community. We have a fabulous production that... And I know years past, we would announce it to the whole community and the room would be full. The theater would be full, every single show. And they have really struggled to keep these theaters full because our communication is only within the district... Within the parameters of parent square, which is actually one of the reasons I had brought up Board Policy 1100. For that reason, for the superintendent's search, so that we could reach out to the community. And I think, and I'm sorry, I just blurred the line there. I recognize that, my apologies. But I've also stood in this room for a long time and I know these policies. And I've said, we need to do better with our community and reach out. And as a community member, I see where we have improved and I see where we haven't. The graphics for the Night of the Arts were phenomenal. They were gorgeous, I'm so impressed. But we need to do better and support all of our students. And so that's where that's coming from. And I'm truly deeply sorry. I left distraught because I knew that there was going to be an onslaught. And I find that to be really disheartening because I called one of the friendliest people in town I know. Thank you for taking my call, Mrs. Perry. Went home, got some puppy love, and then went to the community coalition meeting. And it was there that I was reminded that we pour our hearts and souls into all of these students in our community. And we do have a very strong team in our social and emotional, our school psychologists. They work very hard. The community coalition oversees the Strength in Numbers program. And they have phenomenal programs that they talked about... That we talked about that night or that afternoon. And first, I want to back up and I want to thank Dr. Keller for pulling me aside and asking if I was okay because I was very upset that I had lost my thought in the PTA meeting, but even more upset that there were going to be adults in this community that were going to forget the fact that in this boardroom, we invite students to attend and then we parade up here and absolutely shred the Board. And I'm thinking, how are we promoting this idea from Strength in Numbers that perfection is an illusion? That progress is where we want to make? And, you know, we have to embrace that and we have to act that way and we have to talk that way. Otherwise, we're putting money into programs in our schools, but we're not living it. And I made a mistake. I am human. I am progressing. I'm a work in progress, just like all of us.
Thank you, your time is up. Please take a seat.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm not sure how this works. Did I just push on this? It's on, okay, great, thank you. Yes, as Board Member Sheri Morgan mentioned, I too was at the PTA meeting on Tuesday and I am here to speak about it. I'm really here to speak about conduct and actions, not trying to focus on any kind of campaign. It's just really about what happened. So I am the parent of both a current and a former student here at the Laguna Beach Unified School District. I want to begin by thanking every Board member. As you mentioned, Board Member Morgan, this is really time-consuming and, you know, an important role for our students and our staff. So I do recognize that serving on the school Board is demanding, it's time-consuming, and that, you know, there's a high expectation to demonstrate character and leadership, whether you are here, here, at your child's school, or in the community. It doesn't matter. You're still the same person wherever you are. Your commitment does not go unnoticed. So thank you, I realize that it's a big job. While I believe each of you has the best interest of our district at heart, the recent actions by Board Member Morgan were concerning to me. I'm here tonight to address this incident. As Board Member Morgan mentioned to you, we were in the middle of conducting a meeting, which... With regular proceedings and we were recognizing some of the students in the theater group, two in particular. And then the second student was re-recognized, let's just say. And, you know, Board Member Morgan stood up and yelled, "That's effing rude to mention only one student and not mine." So that is what I heard. That's the way it went down. That's what the implication was. It was very personal in that situation for her, which I understand. But this kind of behavior is deeply troubling. It reflects a lack of emotional regulation and a respect for civil discourse. These are traits that are essential for anyone who's entrusted with the responsibility of shaping policies and decisions that affect our students, our staff, and our community. How can we expect constructive collaboration or sound governance when meetings are disrupted by outbursts and erratic conduct? Unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident. I personally have witnessed this pattern for several years of interaction with this Board member through the Laguna Beach PTA executive and association meetings. So I've been on LBHS PTA, I've been on the Thurston PTA, and I've been on the Council PTA. Is that... Is hopefully to establish an improved code of conduct from this Board member to act without personal interest, without apologies, and without excuses moving forward. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Keta Brown.
Good evening. As you culminate your search for the next superintendent of the district, I would like to remind you of the importance of consensus. Unanimity of this vote is paramount. A 5-0 vote is honestly the only suitable outcome. Any other result will only prolong the distrust and skepticism the public has for this Board. Ms. Morgan misrepresented the City Council's choice of Mr. Kip as city manager, trying to give the false impression that a divided vote could still lead to an effective leader. But he was a 5-0 hire, as Councilmember Kemp so forcefully reminded us of last evening. In addition, I would strongly advise that whatever is reported out of closed be on a roll-call vote. In the pursuit of transparency, it is imperative that the public be aware of how each of you votes. As was presented at the last Board meeting and summarily dismissed by Mr. Hills, both classified and certificated staff members have taken a vote of no confidence in this Board. This choice is the single most important duty you will perform as a Board member. Think beyond yourselves and do what is best for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Shaheen Sheikh Saddal.
Good evening. My name is Shaheen Sheikh Saddal and I'm a Laguna Beach parent, PTA leader, and president of Fuel. I'm here tonight to address two concerns that I have. First, during the LBHS PTA meeting held day before yesterday on school grounds, Board Member Morgan secretly recorded me without my consent. PTA meetings are not public per fourth district. They are membership-based and as such, there is an expectation of privacy under California law and California's two-party consent law applies. I'm not a public official. I lead a nonprofit. That does not strip me of my privacy rights when I'm invited to speak briefly in a school setting. I attempted to resolve this matter directly as I emailed Ms. Morgan respectfully, asking her to delete the recording and request that anyone she may have shared it with to do the same. Instead of acknowledging the concern, she doubled down and claimed that I had no right of privacy. This goes beyond legality. It's about ethics. It's about digital citizenship. And it's not lost on me that Ashley Crotein, SRO, had just given us a presentation on digital citizenship. And yes, it is potentially criminal under California Penal Code Section 632. I'll let the district pursue its investigation and I've also discussed the matter with Laguna Beach Police Department. This behavior by an elected official directed at a community advocate is meant to be chilling. It undermines civic engagement and creates a culture of surveillance and intimidation in school spaces. Other than perhaps Ms. Morgan, no one wants LBUSD to stand for this. Second, I appreciate, Member Perry, that you addressed the email that I had sent to you, although I did not receive a response from you about how Saturday would work. So I do appreciate you taking a moment to talk about whether or not there would be motions and how it will be reported out. That said, I am concerned about there not being a report out of it, especially because Ms. Morgan has been making public comments about how 3-2 votes are just as valid and lead to strong outcomes. We know the data doesn't support this, especially when the three includes Board members in whom over 90% of the staff have expressed no confidence, alongside growing concerns from large swaths of parents and residents. This superintendent hire is one of the most consequential decisions this Board will make. The community is watching and we deserve transparency, of which all of you ran on. Accountability and leadership that honors public trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily... Oh, I'm sorry. Dee Darter. Emily Rolfing.
Good evening, members of the Board and everyone here tonight, community. My name is Emily Rolfing. I'm a lifelong resident, mom of three, and founding Board member of Fuel. I'm here tonight to share my perspective as someone who cares deeply about our schools and the people in them. I want to be really clear, it's not the election results that I'm upset about. It's the way the majority of this Board has chosen to lead since then. What we're seeing isn't about raising important questions. Many of the issues you've brought up deserve discussion. The problem is how it's being done. Instead of working collaboratively with staff in the broader community, what we've seen is a pattern of misinformation, finger pointing, and behavior that's simply not respectful of the role and the people you're elected to serve. At the April 17th meeting, a student Board member and both union reps stood and shared real concerns about how students are being treated and about how staff are feeling. That was brave and it should matter to every single one of us. Thank you for doing that. These are people who show up every day for our kids. If they're telling us something is wrong, we have a responsibility to listen. Now, Board members have supported and amplified misinformation about both school and city bonds and even about how our city manager was hired. One Board member claiming it was a 3-2 vote, which simply isn't true. And using a false narrative to justify hiring decisions in our own district is not only misleading, it's an unacceptable way to govern. Our students, staff, and community deserve better leaders who base their decisions on facts and not falsehoods. The hiring of our next superintendent is a pivotal decision and it will shape the future of our district. My ask is simple. Make that decision together. A 5-0 vote won't erase differences, but it will show our community that this Board is choosing to lead with unity and respect. I want to believe in this Board. I want to believe in all of you. I want to believe that we can move forward in a way that brings us all together, not pushes them out. And I think that is what most people in our community want too. Thank you.
Michelle Monda.
Good evening. Keta and Jeb Brown are leaders of a small special interest group with the unfortunate inflammatory name Fuel, slavishly loyal to the defeated school Board members. Keta's latest diatribe in both local papers demands a 5-0 vote for the new superintendent, yet none of her arguments support appointment of the most qualified candidate. Her politicized demands grandiosely try to force the Board to submit to Fuel's agenda. This is a brazen ploy to give veto power to one or two Board members, including the two holdovers from the old Board who are openly aligned with Fuel. Her demands misinform the public that the superintendent's search firm leadership associates is the source of a mandate for a 5-0 vote. This heavy-handed ultimatum threatens the potential for a real 5-0 vote based on good faith and due diligence we expect from the Board members. Since it would be unlawful for any Board member to divulge closed-meeting information, it's not surprising that fake and dishonest narratives were either leaked and/or fabricated. A 5-vote is always the optimal outcome in any appointment. The new school Board already voted 5-0 to appoint leadership associates as the search firm, despite one Board member aligned with Fuel initially opposing that firm. It is possible even for a deeply divided Board to reach unanimy when it affirms the best choice possible. Conversely, what Fuel demands is a forced compromise in which the outcome may not be based on which candidate is the best choice because political pressure is exerted to force a 5-0 selection. Suppose a candidate is not acceptable to two or three members, but three or four members determine that a candidate who could get a 5-0 vote is not the most qualified. In this scenario, the majority of members facing that choice have a clear duty to select the most qualified candidate and risk a 3-2 vote. What Fuel really wants is to delay appointment of a new superintendent as a first step to restoring the old regime-imposed faked unity. Those were the good old days when Keta was a Board member and retaliation against minority Board members, parents, even students silenced representative democracy. That kind of unity is toxic. Voters ratified a new beginning in the last election that includes ending intolerance that treated public questioning of Board actions as an attack on public education. The new Board is articulating a strategic approach to foster true unity and reconciliation by ending abuses and supporting teachers, parents, and students in compliance with state education code and Board bylaws, laws too often violated over the past decade. We need a new superintendent now, who is the best possible choice, not a consensus hire, to satisfy a politically-driven Fuel agenda. Thank you.
That's all the comments?
Okay, two... I just...
Try to keep it short, anyway. After the previous school Board unexpectedly terminated the superintendent at year-end, finding a top-quality replacement with a strong track record has been and remains the single biggest priority for this group. I'm sure all of the parents thank you for focusing on your primary responsibility of getting a permanent superintendent in place. To create the best opportunity for the kids, I would hope you're all emphasizing candidates with strong experience, top historical performance at their district compared to Laguna Beach, and that would also be a great fit for what makes this such a great place to live for everyone. We all look forward to this final phase of the process and good luck with the upcoming interviews. Trying to end it on a high note.
Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to address the reason that we can't report out after the superintendent interviews is because many of the candidates are current superintendents and they need time to talk to their Boards, their people. That's why they need the confidentiality. We cannot talk about it until it's kind of all settled.
Dee, we haven't discussed this, so it's been announced. But if there's not consensus, we of course are not going to mention which candidate might be getting an offer. But in... I think, given the situation here and a no-confidence vote and concerns about what's going on with the Board, transparency in the form of, "We are extending an offer and it was a 3-2 vote," there should be a motion. You cannot extend an offer without a motion. And if you make a motion, it has to be reported out. And that is just the transparency we need in this moment and you do not have to divulge confidentiality. And if you have differences with that, then we need to discuss it as a Board, not announce it to the community as fiat.
I'm just announcing that we can't divulge who the person is.
No, but we can divulge a motion out about who... what the vote was of the Board and whether we're proceeding with making an offer to someone. That's what people want to know.
That wasn't clear to me.
Oh, okay.
But I thought they wanted to know who it was.
No.
And also, I did have Dr. Lynch reach out because she knew exactly how it would go. Did she... Didn't she reach out to you? You never heard from Dr. Peggy Lynch? Oh, she didn't tell you about how the meeting would go? Okay, I had her because I wasn't sure how it's going to all proceed on Saturday.
Point of comment. We have talked about this and we have consulted council about it and we're going to manage it in the way that's not a result of a debate between members, but one of the things that we've done right as a Board is hiring a really good search firm and a really good search consultant. And we've also got a really good legal counsel. And when the will of the Board as a whole is clear, or the lack of will of the Board as a whole is clear, how that gets managed with the applicants is going to be coordinated primarily by the search firm and the council. And so I think that we'll report out at the meeting consistent with the guidance we're getting and consistent with... And I agree with Joan that we will report out what we're required to report out at that point.
Yes, thank you.
Let's move on to our reports, our student Board members.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'll start with TOW. Grades 3 through 5 are taking their state testing this month and they're hoping to be finished by Memorial Day. Students are also excited to attend some late-year field trips, including to Irvine Park, Laguna Playhouse, and the OCC Planetarium. There've been other fun opportunities for students, such as walkthroughs, plays, and singing performances. And then students are also busy preparing for end-of-year promotion ceremonies and celebrations. And then for Elmore, they just had their annual talent show, which I think was also with TOW, but it was sold out, which was really exciting. They're also wrapping up the last session of after-school programs next week. And with the generosity of school power, Elmore will be adding a new after-school program with the Green Team next year.
All right, for Thurston, they had a plethora of activities going on. Their PALS is leading a bunch of Mother Day activities, things like that. The recruiting, it's one of PALS is like an on-campus organization that kind of promotes, you know, like good conduct and things like that on campus. Mock Trial's been incredibly successful. They earned first place for both the prosecution and defense teams. So congrats to Mock Trial for doing such a great job. And then I just heard the 7th grade social was this afternoon. So it's an awesome opportunity for our kids to get out and do stuff. At the high school, we are in the midst of AP testing right now. One, next week's week two. You know, the counseling office is doing a great job at the high school. We're making sure students feel supported during this time. Kudos to them. And then it was my first time at the dance concert, but the spring dance concert was absolutely excellent. I was really impressed. I had never gone to something like that before and it was really cool. And so I really enjoyed that and so that was great. And then just one last comment. I didn't know about this whole PTA meeting issue, things like that, but I think in the... You know, moving forward, I think it's really important because oftentimes, students are present at those meetings. I've presented at a handful of those about MUN. I know ASB sometimes gives updates about what's going on with ASB at those meetings. And so it sounds like, you know, this issue wouldn't... is not going to arise again, but I think it's really important as our conduct moving forward that, you know, especially... Luckily, this was not an event that was held on, you know, at the high school specifically. It was at the Family Resource Center. But just making sure, especially when students are present, that, you know, we're representing ourselves best we can. Thank you.
Bargaining units, please.
Good evening, Board members. We just... We want to say as CSEA that the staff, we are looking for a consensus in the upcoming superintendent selection. At this critical moment, you must demonstrate unity and professionalism. Many staff members have expressed that they do not have a confidence in this Board and in fact, the vote of no confidence is currently on the table. A 3-2 vote to appoint our next district leader would only reinforce and validate that lack of trust. The superintendent represents our students, staff, and parents and their first responsibility is to serve this district, not political interests. We want a superintendent who will lead with integrity, professionalism, and respect, qualities we are not currently seeing modeled by this Board. Your actions do not reflect the respect owed to the hard-working staff who helped make this one of the top districts in the state. Your hired consultant leadership associates advise that a candidate willing to accept a 3-2 vote should raise red flags and also do not have as long of a tenure as a consensus vote of support. That guidance, I hope, won't be ignored. We ask you to work collaboratively and respectively and to select a candidate who is the right fit for our district and to do so with a unified vote that reflects true leadership. On another note, I'm deeply offended by Mr. Hill's condescending response to the staff's vote of no confidence. What you seem willing to understand is that it's your actions, your conduct, and your decisions and your tone that are communicated directly to staff. As we've said before... As we've said before, just because they're not sitting in the audience doesn't mean they're not watching. They are paying attention, they are talking to one another, and they are asking serious questions. The note of vote confidence was not made lightly, and it did not come out of nowhere. It is a direct response to the behavior and leadership, or lack thereof, demonstrated by this board. You and only you are responsible for the message you are sending to the people who work every day to make this district succeed. We are just the official messengers of that message.
Thank you, Thazak. Good evening, board. First of all, La Vufa agrees with the statement that CSEA made, and I just want to add, thanks for saying that you think the search firm is great. I've thought that they're doing a very good job from what I see as well, so I'm just hoping that we could take their thoughts and their comments to heart. Like Thazak had just mentioned, that a 5-0 vote is important to the tenure of a superintendent, and it typically is twice as long as a 3-2 vote. And more importantly, we would like to see the board come together as a group and make a good decision. A 5-0 vote, unlike what Ms. Mondo was saying, does not mean that we're not hiring the most qualified person. And even a 3-2 wouldn't necessarily mean we're not hiring, but I hope that you really just look at the most qualified person. It is the most important decision that you guys will make your entire tenure, and it's the most important for our staff, for our community, and most importantly, for our students. And just another quick note, I've watched our governance meeting again for probably about the fourth time today, and I just would ask you guys to go and look at that again. I think we all can learn from it. Every time I watch it, I see something different in there, and that we can come together as groups and work together. I think that's the most, you know, super-important thing, that we can work together, and to re-watch that is important. And one last note, I was looking back at an old board meeting before Ms. Morgan was elected, when she was speaking out here, and she was admonishing the current board for not getting along and not being kind, and I think that was very, I think it's still an issue of sometimes us being up here and not being kind and not working together, so I just hope that we can learn to respect each other, be good examples for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our school resource officer?
No report right now.
Superintendent report?
Thank you. I know it's been a busy week with our joint meeting yesterday, our meeting tonight, and then of course Saturday, so I've asked staff to be as efficient as possible with all of our items tonight. We want you to save your energy for Saturday. We're really hopeful that we're going to have a good outcome and appreciate your dedication to the amount of time that has gone into this search, and we're all excited for Saturday as your staff. So with that, I will start with, I want to also thank School Power for putting on the Barefoot Classic golf tournament that was this week. I had not ever participated in that tournament as a golfer, only attended the dinners, mainly because I'm very competitive, and golfing barefoot is not something that I would like to do. But it was, it was a blast, and the support that that organization and all of the people that played in that tournament have provided was fantastic, and it continues to be a big benefit for our school district. Next Wednesday, our governor's May revision budget is supposed to come out, so we're going to get deep into that, specifically looking not just at the impacts on education as a whole, but also specifically community-funded district like Laguna Beach Unified School District, so more to come on that. We have, of course, our student recognition event coming in June. We're all excited for that. So far, we have 366 students, staff, and community being recognized, so it's always a good event, and it's always positive, so we're looking forward to that coming up. And last, I just want to again thank our PTA, and specifically Elmoreau PTA, for both donating and hosting a Sea Lion statue dedication at Elmoreau for Chris Study. The statue came out looking great, really enhances the entrance to the school and provides our families a great opportunity to give Whiskers a high five or pet his nose, so it was very positive, and I want to again thank them. That's my report. Thank you.
Executive Cabinet members?
Thank you, President Perry. So again, as Jeff stated, I wanted to thank the Barrett family and Dr. Kelly, who sponsored two groups of district staff to play in the Barefoot Classic. That was a really exciting and fun event. And then we're also looking forward to partnering with the PTAs next week, where we celebrate Staff Appreciation Week at each site. This year's theme is the heartbeat of our schools with a daily music-themed day. Special thanks to the DO team, Anna Karen, Jennifer, Stephanie, and Victoria, who get so creative every year to make Staff Appreciation Week so memorable. And again, as Jeff Dixon stated, we're looking forward to, on January 5th, to celebrate the students and staff, but I also wanted to take a moment to congratulate our own Anna Karen Cardena Uranoz for her being named as only one of four national finalists with the 2025 School Communicator of the Year Award by NSPR. So congratulations, one of the highest honors you can. Thank you.
Ready?
Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Yeah, since our, I'll keep my update here too, but since our last meeting, I had the honor of accepting the Great Achiever Award for Excellence in Environmental Education, and just want to thank the board for its continued support of environmental literacy. It was exciting to be there with a few of our staff members and to bring it back to the district to recognize all the work that's gone on for many, many years in this area. We also had the wonderful community event, many of you were out with a celebration of arts. Just a special thanks to Sarah Woolsey and Camilla Stevens for organizing this very special event, as well as all the other staff and our local partners, who also helped make it a very successful event for our, with our district and schools and the community. This is really a busy time for performing, visual performing arts students. Recently, our fifth graders had a career trip to Pageant of the Masters. Third graders just two weeks ago went to Laguna Art Museum. They're actually going to go to Laguna Playhouse soon to see Charlotte's Web, which aligns with what they're doing in school. We had amazing, as mentioned, a wonderful dance concert a week or two ago, or two weekends ago. And then we've got some students being recognized by OC for Arts this week as well, and then we still have band, and theater, and jazz band, and I think I might be leaving one out. I think all those are coming up, before we get to the end-of-year events, which they're all performing at as well. So very busy time, but really exciting time if you're one of those students that are in our visual performing arts programs right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board member reports. Would you like to start? Oh, you want to add? You want to add?
Yeah, okay, I just got this. So apologies if I mispronounce anyone's name or anything like that. So I guess, I just learned about this, but I guess our theater department has won a variety of awards. Nominated for awards, my apologies. And so we are going to read off some of these names. I'll do the first half, then Keta. There's a lot of awards here, so shows the excellence of our theater department. So for cappies, supporting actress in a musical, it's Maris Morgan and is it Donalay Rhodes?
As Dorley Rhodes.
As Dorley Rhodes?
Yeah.
Okay, as Dorley Rhodes, my apologies. Marketing, publicity, and the play Trap, which is the fall play, right? That was the fall one, yeah. That's Maris Morgan, Sam O'Neill, Mallory Keller, and Lauren Norx. And then, is this, that's marketing again, right? Marketing, publicity, and a musical, which was supposed to be the spring one. Maris Morgan, Sam O'Neill, Lauren Norx, and Mallory Keller, so a lot of familiar names up there.
And then for choreography in a play, for Trap, we had Maris Morgan and Catherine Jordan. And then stage management in a musical was Anna Sanquist and Rita Capano. Cameo actress in a play, Sam Doshy O'Neill, as the...
She was in Trap.
In Trap. Then we had the female vocalist, Lauren Norx, as Judy Burnley in Nine to Five, and then male vocalist, Jojo Lieber. And then for Spirit of the Macy, I think, we had best actress nominees, Maris Morgan and Lauren Norx, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you for recognizing them. Okay, board member Morgan?
So I think the most impactful, one, I did a couple of things these last couple of weeks. The Laguna Dance event was fabulous. It was at the Lions Museum. If you haven't been to the Lions Museum, it's incredible. The planes and cars that they have were amazing, and it was great to support a local, a local arts group like that, which I have not done before, but I really appreciated that opportunity. And then I went to, as I said, the community coalition following the PTA meeting on Monday, and it was great because, again, they talked about what they could do better, and what they did great, and what they could improve on next year. And I had, we had, everybody had put a lot of different things up on the board, but one of the ones that I had identified was the perfection campaign, perfection is an illusion, and I thought that was really important because, again, you know, we're working really hard to try and do things right, and it's been a rough start for a lot of reasons, but I don't really blame anyone. I think it's just a byproduct of where we're at. The other thing that we talked about was trying to ensure that we try to continue to normalize the conversation around mental health. These were the ones, there was a lot of really great ideas, but these are just some of the ones that I had suggested, and I think it's really important as we continue to work on this. It certainly is very important to me, it's very close to me, I've had a suicide in my family in the last couple of weeks. And to wrap that around, that conversation, and the, the struggle was that she was a perfectionist, and so when we drive people to be so perfect, we aren't necessarily aware of the effects that it has on them, and when perfection becomes an obsession or a compulsion, it's really frightening. So I really embrace the idea that this community is trying to normalize mental health. I love that our district is doing so much wonderful work. I mean, Michael Keller and I go way back through when digital technology was starting to become an issue with our students, and to evolve here is really, really important, and to normalize the conversations, I think, are really important, so that's what I did.
Thank you. Board member Mel Chusky?
I think Anna Karen Uranoz is now up for one of the national finalists for the School Communicator of the Year, so that's great news. Congratulations. I attended the celebration of the arts two weeks ago at the high school. Love seeing so many community members, teachers, staff, in exhibitions that showcases, showcase the amazing work we're doing in the arts. I also watched this week our Thurston Middle School students, led by teacher Michelle Martinez, compete in the county moot court competition. It was just unbelievable. I'm happy to report that Thurston Middle School, for I think now multiple years in a row, won first place for both prosecution and defense, and second place another team, I believe it was defense. I don't want to misspeak, but I think it was for defense also. So we took a lot of the top awards, so I was very proud of our students and Thurston Middle School. I also, yesterday at the joint meeting with the city council, Jeff Dixon shared that Laguna Beach will spend about $35,000 per student this year, and I recently published a paper on the history of California educational fiscal policy reform just a couple of weeks ago, so I have some contextual information that might put the number in perspective for people. The Education Law Center has reported on comparative cost-adjusted per-pupil funding across states, and for each state, they compare the numbers relative to the national average. That data shows that California is ranked below the national average in education funding per student. Our schools are underfunded on average in California. In fact, the data shows that California is ranked below the national average. Our schools are, the state ranks 28th in the country in cost-adjusted student spending. Although the state has the fourth-highest per capita GDP in the country, we devote only about 3% of taxpayer income to K-12 funding compared to about 5% of taxpayer income in other states like New York, for example. We're really fortunate that in Laguna Beach, we've been able to maintain per capita spending at levels that are closer to district and states that rank highest in educational outcomes. For perspective, the state of New York, on average, spent $36,000 per student last year. St. Helena Schools in California, which is closer in proximity to us, also a community-funded district, spends $36,000. So research demonstrates that funding levels have a significant impact on educational outcomes, so I just wanted to make sure that number that was thrown out there was put in perspective for everyone. And that's it.
Thank you. Clark Hills?
Yeah, the Reason Foundation, a few years ago, did a study that reflected, that concluded, and it was with the University of Texas, and I'm going to, I have my notes in here, I have the notes on it, just couldn't find them. And they basically argue that in the end, if you look nationally from east to west, north to south, that how much is spent on education does not determine achievement and results in education, and that it's, that some of the highest-funded schools don't perform, and some of the lowest-funded schools do perform, if you're looking at academic proficiency. And I'll bring that in, and we can talk about it. But I just wanted to mention that. But in terms of my board member report, I just wanted to say, first of all, I wanted to thank you, Jeff, and Chad, and the Assistant Superintendent for the meeting we had with the city council yesterday. I think it went really well, and really appreciated you, your support, and the answers that were given to the questions, and thought it was a very good meeting. I also wanted to report that I spoke to the, as an alternate representative, I spoke to the School Power Board of Trustees, went to their meeting, and the subject, Emily raised the subject of the 5-0 vote, and what I told the School Power Board of Trustees is that I believe every member of the board wants to have a 5-0 vote, and I don't think anybody on the vote, on the board, doesn't want to have a 5-0 vote. And getting drawn into a discussion about other outcomes or other scenarios, I made it clear to them that I think everybody's going to do everything they can to bring that a result. You know, it's interesting, because you can have a 5-0 vote, you can have a 4-1 vote, and in the case of a 4-1 vote, if, in terms of the deliberative process, if there's 4 to 1, the four can either decide to vote with the one, or the one can decide to vote with the four. You can have a 2-3 vote, or a 3-2 vote, and the three members can decide to vote with the two members, or the two members can decide to vote with the three members. And, you know, it's just pretty straightforward and simple, but I think that everybody's expressed the idea that the priority should be the most qualified candidate. I also wanted to say with respect to the comments that were made about how I responded to the survey last time, I don't agree with the way my response was characterized as dismissal at all. I think I was very straightforward, and I looked you right in the eyes, and I told you that I believe that the statements that you'd made at that meeting about members of the board wanting to somehow commandeer the communications process or interfere with the communications process, I thought were highly inaccurate, and what I said was that if I was a member of the bargaining unit, and my leaders came and told me that the board members were trying to take over communications and interfere with communications and do things that the board shouldn't be doing, I would have voted no confidence for the board as well. That's what I said to you. And I will add to that tonight, that I didn't say anything about it, but right now, the negotiations, the bargaining's going on between the unions and the district, and we don't talk about it. But we have received information that maybe your members were told that we were taking positions on pay raises that are not taken, and we haven't taken any positions that have been reported or that I can discuss right now. But I will tell you this, if members of the bargaining unit were told something that isn't true about what's going on in the negotiations, that becomes negotiating tactics, and that's not helpful to your members, or to the board, or to the district, or to the students, or anyone else. So I'm not dismissing anything casually. I'm saying, excuse me, take a deep breath here, I'm saying that I answered you directly, and I'm prepared to answer you directly more, and I wish for the very best. When Joan talks about spending, I'm ready to, I have no problems if the teachers at Laguna Beach High School make more money than anybody in the state or anybody in the nation. I'm not saying they do, I'm saying that if that were the case, that wouldn't be a criteria for me. I've supported the teachers in this school district. I've supported the teachers in the school district for 40 years and actually longer. But I just want to say that I wasn't being evasive or indirect or, or insincere in what I said. And I, I'm, I'm working hard to support a successful outcome for your negotiations and successful relationships with the, between the board and the, and the unions. Last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, it's really selective. I, you hear a lot of talk about, hear a lot of talk about who's for the students and who's not for the students. You have a lot of talk about, we, we hear a lot of talk about keeping the students, make sure they feel safe and, and making sure that we don't make them feel unsafe. And we hear a lot of talk about, we hear a lot of talk about trust. And trust is a subjective value and the question is what objective things do you do to create trust? I want to talk about all those things sometime, but I'm not going to talk about it tonight. But there's going to be discussion. I agree with you. I think everybody should go back and look at the governance workshop that we had when we attempted to try to establish some common ground. And that workshop's going to be followed by other governance workshops where we're going to go. And one thing I can tell you is that board council has revised some of the advice that was given at that meeting with respect to when people are speaking in their official capacity and speaking in their personal capacity and how that affects application of the First Amendment. But we'll get to all that. The only thing I want to say right now and then I'll, I'll yield is this. People talk about kids being safe and making kids feel safe. There are people in this room right now who went on the internet to a fake Instagram account and liked things that had been posted on that internet, internet account. That was a fake internet account. And there are people in this room who commented favorably on those posts and who liked them. And those posts accusing me of being a pedophile were sent to all of my grandchildren. I have been followed by private investigators. And that's not a paranoid, somebody talked about my conspiratorial things or something. I was notified by law enforcement agency that I was being followed by a private investigator. And I was threatened with that before it happened. So I'm all for everybody being safe. I'm all for everybody calming down. I actually think there's some good dynamics forming in the board, but it's been tough. And, and Mr. Carter? It was suggested on the internet that I forced myself upon the Model UN group and that the Model UN group was bored and didn't like what I was saying, but I was forcing them to do that. And that I had showed up on school, school uninvited and forced myself on the Model UN. If I remember correctly, I received an invitation and I worked with you very carefully to agree on what the subject matter of that would be. And I went and had a fantastic experience and I received emails from the faculty and from the students saying, thanking me.
I'm sorry, no, I don't want you to put, I don't want you to put a student on the spot.
I'm not putting him on the spot. I'm asking him a fact.
I just want, I just want you to be careful. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
No, the fact of the matter, he's a member of the board and I treat him as, I treat him with respect and I'm not treating him with disrespect. And so I, you don't even have to respond, Carter.
I'm fine to respond, Clerk Hills. Yeah, no, we were, the Model UN group, we were happy to have you. We appreciate you sharing your experience and I, 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 it's not my understanding was misrepresented that way. We, yeah, we had correspondence about what you were going to talk about, all that kind of stuff. More than happy to, we were happy to have you there. We have many guest speakers coming from time to time. May Runagi comes in, shows his experience, he's a former UN student.
Oh, thank you.
We were happy to have you there.
So I, I apologize for going on too far, but since there's been a lot of innuendo about trust and people being safe and how people are acting, conduct, since there's been a lot of talk about conduct, this is some of the kind of conduct that's been going on.
Thank you. Okay. I, I agree. Perfection is an illusion. I went to the celebration of the arts and had many meetings. We don't need to go into all that. Let's, let's, I am excited to hear about the first generation leader, leaders program. And so Dr. Mayberry, we're looking forward to hearing from you and your team. Please proceed.
Thank you. As you know, the family, our Family Resource Center plays a critical role in providing family resources and education for our parents and our, and our community. Our coordinator of family engagement, Yvonne Redard, who leads the first generation leaders program now and it's the third year, will present information on this really incredible program and how it supports our students and their families. So I'll hand it off to Ms. Redard.
It's on? Okay, cool. Awesome. Thank you so much. So I have 10 minutes and in those 10 minutes, I want to make sure you hear from these lovely ladies because that's what we're here for. And so I'm going to talk briefly about the program, but my name is Yvonne Redard. I am the coordinator of family engagement for our district and I'm just really proud to oversee the first gen leaders program. If you have not heard about this program, let me tell you about it today. So you're in for a treat. So our why, in the United States right now, 60, 54% of all undergraduate students are currently identifying as first generation students. We know that students in, that are first generation, including myself, if you're in the room and you're the first in your, in your family to go to college, kudos to you. You made it. And so we want to think about how we can continue to support students that are navigating these unique barriers that happen when you're navigating something you haven't, it's uncharted territory. And so we know there's also a great opportunity for us to continue to support our students, make sure that they have the tools, the resources, and they feel empowered as they embark in this new journey. And so when we think about students in our district, we know over the last two years, especially from our senior responses, that 20% in 2023 and 19% of the class of 2024 identified as first gen, which is really a surprising figure, especially in our community. So it's really awesome to learn how we can continue to support these students and that there is a need for us to continue to build that awareness for them. We know that our students in our district are going and pursuing college at high rates, but we also know that they might join or go to college and especially their first gen, there might be a lot of like that hidden curriculum that they might not know about. And so this is an opportunity, especially as someone that identifies as first gen, to say, how do I walk that path? And let me tell you that it gets easier, especially if we have mentorship and support from all of us. So that's just a piece of data. The first gen leaders program empowers high school students to unlock their leadership potential, foster meaningful connections and drive positive change within their schools and communities. We honor diversity and are committed to guiding students as they navigate their path to college and beyond. I felt that mission statement was really important to say. We dream big, we lead strong and we go far. And if you look at that, you might not be able to see the logo in its entirety, but that logo that you see, that's our first gen leaders logo. I think one of our student has the shirt right now. And that was designed by VNA. So we called, we did a call to action within our program and said, we want our students to reflect, to be reflective in the logo. And so they created it and they voted upon it. So if you do not see VNA, what does it say? I can't read it from here, but.
False reading of connection.
False reading of connection, yeah. And so in our program, we offer mentorship and guidance. I won't go over this in detail, but personal and professional development and community and peer support. Some of our program elements are really fun and I'm going to touch on a couple of them. But if you ever have questions about it and you want to learn more, please like tap my shoulder. I am happy to go over it. I can go over it for many, many minutes. But we have the first gen book club, which launched this year. We have, we offer college and career exploration field trips. And that looks very different from what you would typically imagine that to look like. We have monthly meetings that are very early for our students at 7:30 in the morning. And yes, they show up, which is awesome. We have the first gen academy that was in partnership with IVC this year. It's the first time they've done anything like this and partnered with us. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. And we partner with our parents. It's really important for our parents to be engaged in this and our students are going to talk a little bit about that. The first gen book club was a really kind of, as we started to think about how can we continue to engage students, particularly through literature? And how do we ensure that students can see themselves in text? We explored the first gen memoir, which is by author Alejandra Campoverdi. If you have not read that book, it's amazing. And our students really, really resonated with the story. And in a partnership with Chapman University, we actually got to meet the author and our students got to ask her questions, sit in a fireside chat and learn a lot about her and ask a lot of unique questions that she just was so amazing to answer. In the, in the spring, we did The Boy Who Reached For The Stars by Elio Morillo. And he is an amazing aerospace engineer, identified as first gen. And I just did a call out to him randomly on social media and I said, would you be willing to speak for our students? And he agreed. And so they met with him virtually a couple of weeks ago. So I thought that was amazing to get him to say yes. And we worked with our career education coordinator, Ms. Kelly Shear, and I just said, I see that IVC has an incredible academy. Can we bring it to Laguna? And she said, let me see what I can do. And so we did. Our students zoomed in for four sessions on this first gen culturally relevant career readiness academy at 7:30 a.m. They concluded it on, was it May 1st? Yeah, last Thursday. And they're all going to receive a certificate of completion from IVC. And it's really thinking about how can we continue to bridge that gap and create a pipeline from K-12 to post-secondary, whatever that looks like for our students. And so it's, it's about being innovative and practicing a lot of just what ifs, what if we did this? And people agreeing to it. Vision for the future. So as we think about what can we, we've been targeting the high school right now, but we know that early college exposure and conversations around career and college awareness has to start early. So our goal is to continue and bring it to the middle school and then dream builders in the elementary school. And we know that we can create that pipeline because we have those students that need that. Scaling it to larger districts, this is something that we've, we've had the opportunity to present. Recently, we presented to the San Diego County of Education. And it's been remarkable to see just the outcomes that have come of that. They are just really excited to hear from our students. And I'll have them talk a little bit about that. And now I'm going to defer to our students. So if you have any questions, please find me.
Hello, I'm Evelyn and I'm a senior at Laguna Beach High School. So to start off, my dad didn't finish high school and my mom didn't have the opportunity to pursue a higher education. Because of that, I never had anyone that, you know, could guide me through the steps of planning my future, figuring out a career and even just making the most out of my education. My mom always told me, que sigas estudiando y que siempre le echas ganas, porque no quiero que termines limpiando casas, which means always keep stuttering, studying and always give it your best so that you don't end up cleaning houses, just like she did. Those words always stuck with me. And the first generation leaders program has changed everything for me. It gave me a space where I wasn't alone, where I could actually see a future for myself. This program helped me take my first college visit. It pushed me out of my comfort zone, helping me practice public, public speaking and connect with others who share similar stories. For the first time, I felt like I didn't, like I, for the first time, I didn't feel like I was figuring everything out on my own. Growing up in Laguna, it often felt like everyone else had it figured out. My friends would talk about their plans and even, and when I asked how they knew what to do, they said they had a parent or older sibling. I didn't have that, but through this program, I found the support from Ms. Redard and Ms. Rojas, who became my mentors, not just for high school, but for life. They listened, guided me and believed in me when I wasn't sure I believed in myself. This program gave me more than just information. It gave me the confidence and community. I genuinely hope that any student struggling to navigate their own path can be a part of this program and feel the same support. Thank you.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Adamari and I am a senior at Laguna Beach High School. I will be the first person in my family to go to college and finish my education. I came to the United States to find better chances to study and to learn English. I was born here, but I am a daughter of immigrants. I want to share how special it has been for me to be a leader in this program. The first generation leaders program helped me a lot during my first year of high school in the U.S. I felt lost in the beginning, but the program gave me support and made me feel safe. Without this help, I, I don't know where I will be. Thanks to this program, I met other students who have stories like mine. We also went to colleges and listened to college students talk about their careers. I learned about many jobs and what I can do in the future. This program gave me more confidence and made me believe in myself. After high school, I went to study at Saddleback College. Later, I was transferred to another school. I know I have many options, though not sure which one yet. It's my dream to become a nurse. Thank you for your attention.
Hi, my name is Belen Gonzalez and I'm a junior at LBHS. As a first generation student, I experienced uncertainty in fields that many other students that I was surrounded with, like they seemed to be confident in. And I didn't know who to ask for advice or turn for help for like reaching higher education. My parents dropped out of school very early to support their families. And my story is very different from them. Being part of this group has given me a place of belonging, answers to my questions, opportunities, the discovery of a professional career and confidence. We've been speaking about our unique experiences to others recently. So far, this has been quite impactful. It has also helped me with my personal growth. Through this program, I have realized that I belong, I can take up space and that my story is important. I hope by sharing my testimony, I can help others.
Hi, my name is VNA Garrido Medina and you may recognize me as a senior at the high school. I've had the privilege of knowing the first generation leaders mentors, Ms. Redard and Ms. Rojas Reynolds for almost my whole life. My family and I often turned to them for the unique support and resources they had to offer. As an immigrant, my grandma spoke very limited English. I grew quite familiar with Ms. Redard and Ms. Rojas Reynolds as they often had to step in as a translator for my grandma between my teachers and district staff. However, over the past four years, I've had the ability to connect with them on a much deeper level. They knew firsthand the complexities of being from an immigrant family and the unique obstacles that come with it. Before, I wasn't sure why I was so different from my peers. I wasn't sure why I struggled so much in my classes when they didn't. And I wasn't sure why I didn't have a plan when everyone else did. I went day by day surviving rather than really living. In a one-on-one conversation with Ms. Redard, she put a name to the feelings I was experiencing. And it was the first generation experience. It was one she knew as well, being it from, being from it herself. To be first generation, the first in your family to pursue higher education is to be the black sheep. It can be an incredibly isolating experience, especially when you're taking a path that has never been taken before. But with the program like the first generation leaders, it doesn't have to be. Here, I've received an incredible amount of support. They take us on field trips to local colleges, businesses and include us in spaces where our voices are celebrated. If there's anything I would encourage for the district to continue to support and endorse, it would be this program. It's given me a sense of belonging and it's given us all of a sense of direction. There is nothing more valuable than being celebrated. I know that because it saved me. Thank you for your time.
If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I would just like to thank you and thank the young ladies. It's kind of ironic because they probably heard earlier that there's, the adults have some issues here, but, and I have some issues, but I want to say that this presentation that you young ladies made tonight, for me, makes it worth going through and putting up with it, some of the stuff that I'm putting up with on the board. It makes my service to the students in this district worth it. And I commend all of you. And I also, on a personal note, want to add that when my wife was your age, she was in a very similar situation, you know, and she came to America. And so I was really moved by your presentations.
Thank you so much.
So I also want to add my, oh, I think, you have to turn. Oh. Yeah, I, I think this is a terrific program. I'm very happy to hear about this. It was very inspirational. I would also encourage you, if you don't already know, we have an institution nearby, which is UCI, that has a first generation office. I work there. They have outreach to students and they ask, I think it's 52%. Is it 52% Richard, is first generation students at UCI? And they even ask faculty, I'm, I'm a first generation student, so we self-identify at the beginning of every course so that students know that there is a first generation professor and they don't have to feel embarrassed to ask things. they don't have to feel embarrassed to ask things they don't know about, about the syllabus or office hours or things like that. So, you know, it's good to look for other institutions that are doing this as they move forward. And I'm just so grateful that you've got this program going. And thanks to all of you for presenting your stories. I really appreciate it and think it's terrific.
Thank you so much.
Yes, yes, wonderful job, Mrs. Rudard. And you all spoke so well. Congratulations, you were great. And I would echo what Board Member Malchuski said, I know it's really important. I've mentored a number of young First Generation people and going to college and finding a group where you belong is really important. And I'm glad you have that now in high school and I hope wherever you go on to, you will find that also.
Thank you.
I would like to mimic everything that they've all said. I would have to agree with Member Hills as well. This is why I do this and tolerate what we tolerate. So thank you. I know I've met V and spent time with her at LCAP and I was so impressed. You are doing a great job. This is a phenomenal program. I think my only question was, in reading the background, it says that this year we have 30 students actively participating, but if the percentage is based on our enrollment, we have quite a few more. Is there more that wanted to participate and just couldn't because we didn't have the space or the funding? How can I help?
You know, we have full support from our administrators here, so I really think everybody in the room, it really does take a village for that. I think there's, I mean, we're in year three, technically year two of implementation, so we have a lot of room to grow. I'm working closely with Dr. Kenenberg and we're adding additional pieces so that we can do more selective and targeted outreach. So you'll be seeing that next year. There's a lot of different plans and to Board Member Malchuski's comment, I wish I had more time to share all the exciting things that we're doing. We're actually going to be speaking to San Marcos Unified on Monday. We partner with, we're going to be partnering with Cal State San Marco. Yeah, so there's a lot in the works, but I appreciate that because we are going to be going and doing a specific outreach to our students so that we make sure we capture them earlier.
Well, it's phenomenal and I know I'm only a first, I'm only a second generation because my mother remarried, otherwise I'd be a first generation. And I, it's so important to give students a light to see at the end and I'm so impressed. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now, another exciting topic, Laguna Beach Unified School District 2025 Summer Programming. And looking over the list, I'm so impressed. It would be hard, it would be hard to choose which classes to take. There's so many great ones. I know this program's really grown and we're very excited to hear about it.
Thank you. Well, that is a really tough act to follow, but I will do my best. Good evening, President Perry, members of the Board, Acting Superintendent Dixon. Thank you for allowing me to join you this evening to share a preview of our LBUSD 2025 Summer Programming. On behalf of our entire summer team, I want to begin by expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation to the governing board for your continued support of these impactful extended learning opportunities for our students. All of our programs share three common goals. Skill development and enhancement, building meaningful connections and engaging learners, and instilling confidence in our students so they can begin the new year feeling not only prepared, but empowered. And of course, because it is summer, we strive to instill joyful learning and integrate a little bit of fun wherever we can. This year, we are proud to offer six unique programs. We are right in the middle of our enrollment process right now, but we are anticipating 900 enrollments this summer. First up is our LBHS Summer Offerings. Our High School Summer Academy, coordinated by our dedicated and seasoned summer school leader Scott Whitkop, includes credit recovery classes, summer bridge courses in ELA 9, Algebra 1, Algebra 2 honors, accelerated geometry, as well as honors and AP French, and Spanish honors and AP as well, pending enrollment, so we're still doing the outreach right now, as well as our ELD Academy, which this year has been reimagined as a writer's workshop. So, English language development with a specific focus on writing because we have seen that that is really where our greatest need is at the high school level. So that will serve students in grades nine through 12. And we are also piloting a new hybrid health course this year as well, taught by Mrs. Foster. And this is specifically to serve students who were unable to take health because they had a conflict in their schedule due to the AP human geography class. So we're trying to really accommodate our students and make sure that they're able to get all of their graduation requirements in. And we also are thrilled to welcome back our high school math mentors under the direction of Brooke Sargent. This was a program that we piloted last year. So Ms. Sargent has been training mentors all throughout the year and they are coming back to volunteer. These are our superstar math students, so they will be working one-on-one with our credit recovery math students to really provide some additional support and collaboration. They work on quite a few group tasks together and projects to make the problem-solving process a little bit more engaging, so it's not quite so isolating. So we're excited to welcome them back this year. So we are excited. Last year, we had about 57 students enrolled, so this year we do anticipate a small enrollment as well. But as Mr. Whitkop and I were discussing earlier, we see this as actually a great thing because it really is a testament to the effectiveness of the MTSS program at the high school. We do not have a lot of students needing to recover courses who are getting D and F grades. So that grade counseling coupled with the academic intervention that our students are receiving has been highly effective. So those numbers in the credit recovery classes will dwindle, which means the students who are there will get a lot of individualized support. Next up, we have our Summer Academy, which serves incoming first through eighth graders. This program is coordinated by the talented Michelle Martinez and is a four-week intensive academic program. And the hallmark of this program is really small group academic intervention in literacy and math. So we have a learning center model, which means you will see multiple teachers in the same classroom working together. This really allows for flexible, skill-based grouping, so we are able to give kids really personalized instruction that is tailored to their needs. So the focus is on learning, recovery, and acceleration, making sure that students who did not master the skills in the prior grade are able to address those knowledge gaps and start the next year hopefully more confident and better prepared for what is to come. We also have a variety of enrichment courses that we offer students in this program. So we have art class that students go to, as well as STEAM, and a hybrid music technology class, as well as a new world language integration, so they'll be getting a taste of Spanish and Spanish culture this year, a new class we're trying. We also have a middle school leadership development focus. So our middle school students serve as math peer tutors for our younger students, so we train them on math games and they go into a second or third grade class and work with students on basic addition and subtraction facts. And then really the big celebration is our culminating event, which is our student-led carnival. So our middle school students design all of the carnival games out of recycled materials and they lead the entire carnival by themselves. So they design the games, they run the carnival, create the prizes, and we, the adults, work under their direction. So it's a lot of fun and if you couldn't tell from the outfits there, we have a Disney theme, so we like to call it the most magical place to learn. Happening in tandem with our academy is our Extended School Year Program. So this serves students in preschool through eighth grade. Again, this is our four-week specialized program. Students in this program are recommended by their IEP team in order to maintain progress on their goals to avoid regression over the summer. So typically, we serve between 15 and 20 students in these very small classes so that students can work on their individual goals. So we anticipate similar enrollment to that this year. And in the Summer Academy, currently, we are still enrolling students, but currently we have 100 students signed on to participate. So we will be busy. We are continuing our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Laguna Beach to offer our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. This is a full-day program that is offered at no cost for students who qualify. And essentially, it is a summer camp extravaganza where they have student interest-created clubs and fun themes, and they also have off-site excursions and field trips throughout the summer. So working parents are able to drop off early in the morning and it runs all the way till 6:00 p.m. and it goes all summer long. And students who are attending our academic programs are able to catch the bus from our schools and then head on over to the Boys and Girls Club afterwards so that we are offering that full-day support for students who need it. We are thrilled to announce the return of our LEAD program. We have grown to 550 students this summer, which is an increase of 60 students from last summer. We have 140 unique classes. We have grown by about 40 classes from last summer and 122 of those classes are taught by our LBUSD staff this year. So we have 32 teachers on our team and four CCA teachers who are going to be doing early career exploration classes. So a few of our courses, just to give you an idea, are 38 approximately different courses in the Vapa area. We have approximately 24 science STEAM-focused classes, robotics, forensics, engineering, lots of fun things happening with Legos. We have quite a few academic boot camp-style classes, so we have Math Boost, Math Readiness, we have writing workshops happening. We have literacy-focused classes, quite a few book clubs happening this summer, even at the very early grades with our incoming first graders, so that we can really instill that love of reading and literacy and get the kids excited and do a lot of thematic activities around literature with them. And our early career exploration classes, new and noteworthy this year, journalism, health professions, fashion design, we have a chef's challenge, filmmaking, and then the return of musical theater, textiles, printmaking, a lot of fun things happening. We're also really excited to bring back our LBHS LEAD Summer Mentors. So this is when our high school students earn community service hours by volunteering in our LEAD program. And what's special about this is we're actually able to match our students, high school students, with classes that align with their special interests and passions. So the athletes are paired with our sports classes, the artists are working in our art classes, et cetera. So when the students fill out their application, they tell us what they love and what their interests are and what they're interested in sharing skill-wise with the students. So it's really interesting. And we have 24 students signed on so far and I was reviewing their applications just this afternoon and I loved reading their, their why, for why they wanted to sign on and some of them were saying they want to be teachers one day themselves. So they wanted to get that classroom experience early on. So thank you again for supporting the LEAD program and we look forward to a really fun summer with, at TMS for that program. And we are bringing back again our TK Kinder Readiness Camps because we don't want to forget our youngest students as well. So we are offering one-week sessions at both El Moro and TOW for students who are entering TK or kindergarten. And here, they're really going to work on those early school readiness skills, get acclimated to the school campuses, of course, make new friends, get to know teachers, and kind of get those classroom routines established so when the first day of school comes around, they really have it down pat, they're experts. So last summer, we served approximately 67 students in this program, so we would anticipate probably that size or potentially a little bit larger, we are still enrolling. But another great offering, so all in all, we are serving preschool all the way up through 12th grade through our summer programs. This is just a little bit of feedback from last summer. You can see that we collected feedback from our students and our parents in the various programs. We had a big shift last summer with our high school program where we moved from a model that was more of a, an online version supported by the teachers to a direct teaching model. And our staff worked really hard to design engaging classes and the students absolutely loved it. We got incredible feedback and to get incredible feedback from teenagers coming to summer school, I think is pretty impressive, so we were happy with that. So we hope to see similar feedback this summer and we will do our best to make it really impactful and positive for our students. So our summer ahead is poised to be one, full of creativity, connection, and confidence building. And again, we are so grateful to the board for allowing our team the time and the space and the trust to build these powerful experiences for our students. Together, we are keeping the love of learning alive year-round in Laguna Beach.
Well, you said it was a hard act to follow, but you measured up and you equaled and held your own, so you're a very hard act to follow as well.
Thank you.
I can't, how many years have we done LEAD now?
Oh gosh, so this is my fourth summer doing the LEAD program. I believe it started in summer of 2021, correct? And that was during the COVID days. So it kind of was born out of that, trying to get kids sort of a connection because that was the hybrid learning year. So yeah, so this would be our fifth year doing LEAD and it's just grown every year.
Well, good presentation, but also it's a real testament to what you guys are doing because normally you would have students say like, I don't want to do that at summer school. And, you know, kids are really enrolling more, every year there are more students and parents also look forward to it. It's like a week that something is planned, it's free, it's, you know, provided in interesting ways for the students. So I just think you guys are doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I totally think you're doing a fabulous job too. And I think students are talking to other students, parents are talking to parents, and more and more students want to come now and are excited about it. And if you added 40 more classes, that's a lot. Wow. And like I said, I think it would be hard to choose what class to take, there's so many great ones. I had a couple of questions, like about the, the health class. Can anyone take it or do you have to have been one semester? Can anyone take it?
So right now, they're targeting a really specific group of students. I believe it was 30 students that they were looking at in particular because those were students who need to get that health class in their schedule that haven't yet been able to and time will run out for them. So they want to start because it's a pilot of it and they kind of want to start with a small group and see how it goes and then can kind of talk from there. But seeing it's a new model and summer seems like a good opportunity to trial some things, so.
It does. And don't a number of our students take a health class online instead of at school?
No. It's, we're, one of the things that the, there may be a handful of kids that have unique situations that come up, that they move into the district or, you know, miss it, whatever, there's, there could be a few. But in general, one of the things the high school teachers are really, really find important about that health class is having those topics done, done in person, right? Like when you think of that health class, there are things around mental health, navigating challenges around sexual, sex education, challenges around all the different things you may have to do in high school, you know, when you're that age, at this age, to, most of the kids that take that class are around. Most of the kids that take that class are around 14 or 15. And so they've really prioritized trying to have that in-person with students so they can have those conversations and also bring in speakers on those different areas that kids have specific needs to. So they really prioritize keeping it in-person.
Great. Well, I saw that this class will be kind of a combination, part in-person, part online, right? So it'll be, get a lot done during the summer. And then there are 57 math mentors at the high school?
So last year, our enrollment at the high school for the summer program was 57 students.
Students?
Yes, enrolled. So I'm not quite sure how many math mentors we will have joining us. I know Ms. Sargent is always recruiting. I believe there are around 70 students trained. So I'm not sure how many are going to devote their time to volunteering. So I think that's still in the works, but I'll report back to you in a weekly update when I know for sure. But we definitely had a good number of students volunteering last summer.
Yeah, I remember seeing last year, and I thought that was really exciting. And then I see that you're kind of doing that at the middle school, too, bringing middle school students into the elementary.
Yep.
And now, is there no science recovery this summer at the high school? Is that not needed?
We have science recovery at the high school as well.
Yeah, as of right now, we don't have any science students failing. So as we keep going, then we won't have any. But it's, if the students need it, we are ready for it.
Yeah, we're prepared. We have a teacher on board if needed, and we have offered it traditionally. But like I said, this is a great problem to have. They're doing such a great job at the high school that they just don't have the need for credit recovery as much anymore.
I love it. And I, yeah, love the whole elementary program and how exciting it is. And it was lots of fun last year to see it and to see kids planning their carnival games. And it's terrific job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think it's fabulous. I have, I, I would, I have a couple of questions. Is this, when is this all occurred? Does it start immediately following school? Is it, because I'm hearing some programs are just a week, some are a little longer. So is there a lot of overlap? Does it all have to occur within like a four-week block? And then how long is the health class?
Sure. Altogether, our programs are six weeks. So we do start, we have a quiet week. The week after school is done. So we are starting, the high school program's actually starting on a Friday this year, on June 20th. And it's running so they can get a full 20 days because the teachers feel that that's really important. Because of the Fourth of July, it kind of throws a wrench in our summer schedule. So the other program, the K-8 program, is 19 days, but we're starting on a Monday. And so that starts on June 23rd. And then both of those programs will end on July 18th. And then we start that very next week with LEAD. And LEAD runs for two weeks, but parents have the choice. They can send their students for one week, or they can send them for two weeks. They can take anywhere from one class to six classes. It's the preference of the students and their parents. Most of our students come for six because I helped out a lot with enrollment this year, so I saw very full schedules. But it is based on the preference of the students and their families. So they have a lot of different options that work with their individual schedules. So we are pretty busy. And then the TK Kinder Camps, there is some overlap in there because it's over a four-week period, but those are one-week camps for the little guys. And then the, our program with the Boys and Girls Club runs all summer long. So we really have something for everybody.
No, I think it's fabulous. And I think one of my favorites is the, just in overarching ways, how the different students integrate at the different campuses and help out and mentor because I think it's such a valuable experience for them, whether they want to be, you know, teaching and have classroom experience or just that experience of, maybe they don't want to teach. I mean, I know we've had that in our house. So it's like, I don't think I can do this. It's, I have a lot of admiration for you all. I think the, I have, and one other question is, do we have any overlap with what the city offers? Or is there a partnership in what you offer to make sure that we're not competing with any of their vendors?
I'm not really sure about that. I know that because our program is free of charge for LBUSD students, I think we're kind of preferred to fee-based programs.
So it's just LBUSD, LBUSD students, then? So if they're not enrolled in the spring, can they not do the summer program?
Correct, yes.
Can they enroll for fall and do the summer program?
So our programs are a continuation of the current school year. So we plan for it that way. And then if they join us in the fall, we'll welcome them next summer.
Well, that's good to know. I would think people would enroll early because that looks like a lot of fun. And when is this recycled material carnival? It sounds like fun. Can we eavesdrop?
Yeah, it's on our very last day. It's on June 18th, and you're all welcome to come. And I'm sure the students will let you play their games. And if you're lucky, maybe you'll win a prize.
Well, that would be great. Thank you so much. Great.
But just wanted to say, I really liked the program at Thurston to bring to the literacy program. I think that serves a real need. And I just wanted to say, I know that because when I was in fourth grade, I did summer school here, and it really, really helped me a lot going into fifth grade. And then I got picked up in an enrichment program in the summer before my eighth-grade year, so, my seventh-grade year. So I just wanted to add a personal anecdote that I know how this works. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, on to information items, business services. The monthly financial update, Mr. Dixon. We're looking forward to hearing your update.
Thank you. It will not be as good as the two prior presentations. Just get that, there's no good transition to it. I would just like to say, thank you, Yvonne, for all the work you do with the First Generation Program. That was so impressive, and her passion for those kids, I think is the vast majority contributing to the success of that program. So, well done. As for the monthly financial, normally, we wouldn't bring it this month, but because we had a unique monthly financial presentation last month, being the Fuel presentation, I wanted to make sure the board saw us back on track with our revenues and expenditures. You'll notice that it'll show favorable for both categories as far as our trend amounts. And then also, the one unique piece in this monthly financial is on page six of 12. You'll see our other post-employment benefits investment. As the results right now is, we have earnings of almost $1.4 million. So we're tracking very positively with our other post-employment benefits trust. And for the benefit of the board and our student board members, other post-employment benefits are benefits that we pay for employees that may retire before 65, for example, but continue to get health benefits through the school district. So it's not pension-related at all. It's primarily those health, dental, and vision benefits. So that, happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions, discussion? Any board, any comments? I asked if there were any questions. No questions? No more word comments? Are there any comments from the audience, Mr.? Okay, now. The next item is action, business, action items, business that raises. Approval for the acting superintendent, Mr. Jeff Dixon, to enter into a contract with auditors to conduct a targeted audit. Mr. Dixon, floor is yours again.
Thank you. Yeah, at the request, the board had wanted to find a way to, because we didn't change the signatory resolution that still had the former superintendent as an authorized signer, the board had asked what ways we could determine that nothing was ever committed or executed between the time of termination, the end of December, through March, when we brought the resolution back, taking the name off. One option we could explore would be this targeted audit where we'd, I would work with our auditing firm to review the documentations necessary and report it back to the board to show that there were no commitments made or signatures done between that time period. In last week's weekly update, if you recall, I did show that the primary way that we execute contracts is through Business Plus. That's the county software for our accounting that we track. And Dr. Boraya had been deactivated right away on January 2nd when we came back after break. So it would be primarily looking at signatures at that point.
And any contracts also, signatures on contracts?
Yeah, although with contracts specifically, we don't ever sign contracts till after the board seen them and approved them. Sometimes if we bring them signed, it'll be partially signed by the vendor. So that, but yeah, that would, I would imagine be part of it.
Yes, we're asking questions. Do you have some questions?
Okay, so in a past life, I was actually registered as a CPA in New York and was an audit senior for one of the international audit and accounting firms. So I have some expertise in this area. And I just want to ask you some questions to help people in the audience understand what's going on here. So first of all, I'm sorry to do a little accounting class, but can you define audit controls and define the controls that are in place in our school district? And as part of that, can you give us information from our audit records? In terms of the comments, when you get an audit, you not only check the financial statements, which I do very carefully every year, but we also get comments about whether or not we have internal control issues. So can you just describe that, describe our audit controls related to this? And then whether or not we've ever had an audit issue around these issues?
Sure, and it's a good question. That's one of the areas of focus I like to have with our auditors when they come in. I'm always asking, test our checks and balances. It's a very important component of managing any sort of financial system. So audit controls, in a nutshell, is they're going to come in and test those controls to see if all purchases or contracts were executed in the appropriate order and had the appropriate approvals prior to any sort of approval of a contract or a payment to a vendor. They test that with not only the auditor that comes in, but just so the board knows, Orange County Department of Ed is constantly auditing us on especially larger purchase orders to make sure that those are in place prior to an auditor coming in. So we actually have quite a few layers within that, even though we're small. For example, just talking through the purchase order process, if a school site wants to purchase something as simple as, let's say, additional toner for a copier, they'll put in a purchase request into the system. The site administrative assistant has to be approved by the site principal before it goes to a financial analyst to make sure the account code is properly entered so that it gets charged to the appropriate account, comes to me for final approval, and then my assistant for printing that purchase order. So there's lots of different steps, and that's what you want to see in any sort of financial system, are those steps that you get these contracts or any sort of payments approved.
So this whole thing implies a possibility of some financial malfeasance. What would that look like? Is there any evidence that there's been any kind of problem? Or is there any opportunity in terms of our audit controls for this? Because I'm just concerned about the agenda item in general.
I could say for signing, just in terms of signing things, right? Like I said, the contracts all have to come to the board prior to anyone in the district signing. We would all see that, you would see them before. We do, at times, issue checks primarily to only our employees, and that's when we had a mistake on their payroll. Those checks would be very rare, and they require two signatures. The only other thing we do as far as our checking service goes is we use Wells Fargo as a clearing account for us, where we collect different funds from the site, whether that be for fundraisers or for field trips. And we'll, or our nutrition program is another good example, where we'll write a large check from our account at Wells Fargo to ourselves at the county treasury. And that also requires two signatures. So it'd be very, very difficult.
Mr. Dixon, is it a standard practice when somebody, whether they retire, resign, or terminated, that you, you know, take their keys, get their, all of their passwords, that everything is checked right then and there? Kind of called offboarding? And what we're, what we're looking at is, just because this was done a little bit differently, not thinking anything's wrong or accusing anybody, just making sure we're doing our job to make sure nothing was. And we don't expect to find anything. But if something did happen, the minimum amount that we're spending on this is nothing compared to the potential liability exposure we would have.
Yeah, so for your first question, it is common when someone leaves or resigns, you collect their keys, all district-issued equipment. That happens right away. In terms of changing, if they're an authorized signer to a different authorized signer, we had historically, and I can't speak for every school district in the state of California, but for the ones that I've worked for, usually, you'd wait till you bring on the replacement for that position, and you take that person off as a signatory and add the new person on. So it's a one-step process. But we had heard concerns from the board about the delay, as it was called, for the removal of the former superintendent. And so that's why I think this item is being brought here today is to quell any concerns that may exist.
Weren't there also issues a little bit with getting the passwords and so on for certain accounts?
No, we just, no, we were just, because of the separation agreement that had the clause of through the end of March, the access to email would still exist. But we were able to get the passwords as soon as we wanted to. And that's, Victoria and I have been monitoring that.
Do we have a written onboarding policy that we follow? I mean, I know we have standard procedure of how we bring people in and out, but do we have something in writing that we check and that's part of the packet when people come in and when they go out? You know, inboarding and onboarding?
Yes, we do. And it's, there's a, as part of my team when they bring it on, there's a full onboarding packet that's provided. They walk through the process to collect the necessary documentation.
So I think, I would think under most circumstances, then, there, that we would not be having this conversation, I would assume. But I think the concern and why it came forward is because there's such a long gap from when the contract actually went into place, which was really back in November, was when the termination date started. And it was ending in December. I wasn't aware that March was a date, excuse me, was a date that was, access was still offered? I thought it was a date, just an email. Okay, so, but, so I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see this as anything. I mean, a regular audit wouldn't catch things like that. Is that correct? When we, because I think it's great that we have clean audits, but an audit, a general, a typical audit every year would not look at contracts and signatures and different, the different items that would be more in tune with an audit such as this. Is that correct?
The general audit would, but I'm not going to say it will every time because remember, an audit takes samples. It samples different expenditures, different contracts, in different categories. They focus very heavily on categorical funds to make sure you're in compliance with all the restrictions. So it could catch it, but doesn't guarantee that it will.
So we want to make sure this is tailored to be broad enough to catch, to look at all possible, just all the different things.
This would be a targeted audit, so it would look at all things. It's very specific parameters.
Thank you. I have no more questions at this time.
So since it's targeted, it wouldn't take very long, probably, or be very expensive. It would just be a safety guard for us, right?
I would bring that information back to the board. I am not, I, to be totally transparent, I have not done a targeted audit. So I don't know how long it would take. I know when we did our Proposition 51 audit, which was the state facilities funding, we got matching from the state for the Thurston project. I remember I included that in one of the weekly updates. That took a few months because that looked at the full project and all expenditures. But that was over a course of a year and a half project. So there were a lot of documents to look at. So just to give you some idea of scale and size, that's kind of why I wanted to include that in the update.
Well, I know your time was something, was a comment that you had made when this first came up. And I think that's probably one of the reasons this stemmed into a, you know, a third-party request so that your time would not be taken. I know you mentioned something about working with, working with the firm, but I don't think it's, the idea, I don't think, is to take away your time. I think it's to have a different, and somebody else take care of it so that you can focus on all of the different things that you're doing for us right now.
Sure, so the initial would definitely be more time if we try to do it in-house because we would be pulling all the information, reviewing it, and then certifying it via probably like a checklist. This would replace the review and certification. We'd still just need to pull all the documentation and give it to the auditors. But still a little time, but it definitely alleviates.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have questions? I don't have any more questions right now.
Okay.
From the audience?
I haven't commented yet. Like Dr. Malcheski, I have a little bit of relevant experience. And I'm not even sure that this is a, is really an audit, I don't know. But I don't think that this should require as much discussion as it's getting, but that's, that's fine. It's good to have a lot of discussion. I think since we're making statements for the record, it's important to note that Board Counsel has advised that they've never seen a contract like the termination contract for the former superintendent. And the contract was approved and signed by the board before it was signed by the former superintendent. And these are all interesting features of it. And, but I think when we're talking about the period from November 21st to December 31st, that at least was a situation where he was an employee of the district, and he was on leave, unused leave, as I recall. And, but the period from January 1st to April 1st, I guess it would be, if I understand it correctly, he was not an employee of the district. And so you have a situation where somebody who's not an employee of the district has signature authority and has passwords for accounts. And I know we requested several times that that be addressed, and it, I don't think it ever did get addressed or didn't get addressed until late April. But the point is that I think that it's, that this is exactly the opposite of what Dr. Malcheski suggested. This is not in any way casting any aspersions about anybody. What this is doing is protecting the staff and protecting the board, protecting the district from an anomalous situation that is not part of the normal audit process. It's an internal controls and compliance issue, and it's something that, the purpose of doing this, when we originally talked about this, one option that we talked about was-
With all respect, Member Hill, this is a discussion, and we still have to have questions. We have, we have to have ques, this is supposed to be questions and then a discussion after the public comment. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand.
And then we'll have discussion.
I'm just getting equal time here. If I can complete my point, one of the options that we talked about was that if the staff is in a position to just certify that nothing, no, that, that, there was no action taken or authority exercised during that period, then we could all just say, well, the staff has certified it. You're not able to do that, and I wouldn't recommend to you that you do that. This is an attempt to close this out so that everybody can go on their way, and we don't have to worry about ever revisiting this again. Nobody is trying to make this a controversial issue or an issue that makes anybody look bad. In fact, I think it's, the whole purpose of it is to avoid that. And so I will save my other comments.
Jeff, just to, I'm sorry, just to clarify, since this is for questions. Mr. Hill stated that he had passwords to everything. My understanding is it was only to email. He was signed off of the system, so he did not have passwords to go in and access payables or anything like that, right?
Correct, it was just emails, but the, there were passwords from the state of California when we had the, those old COVID relief funds, we're still doing reporting on that. Sometimes they'd send them to me, sometimes they'd send them to the superintendent, and we need those to complete the reports, but that doesn't give you access to any of the district accounts. That's to CDE, and so it's just important for us to-
So those were passwords, other than just email passwords, those were passwords to accounts?
To CDE reports.
Right.
Yeah, so we can upload data.
Okay, precisely.
Okay. So are there any speaker cards?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one second. Keta Brown.
That other superintendent is Mike Conlin. 100% conspiracy theory, gobbledygook. If you move forward with this and nothing is found, which will ultimately be the case, the board members pushing for this should be required to reimburse the district all expenses incurred.
Shaheen Jake Sodal.
I'm going to address the proposed audit related to the former superintendent's financial activity during the first quarter of the year. Let's be honest, this would be laughable if it weren't such a waste of staff time and taxpayer money. The idea that our former superintendent could have committed financial misconduct during a time when he no longer had access to the district's purchasing system is not just far-fetched, it's a complete misunderstanding of how our financial systems work. His access to Business Plus was shut off at the start of January. He couldn't approve purchases, issue payments, or access district funds. Every transaction still had to go through the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and then the Orange County Department of Education before being issued from the county treasury. That's not a loophole you can squeeze fraud through, it's a brick wall. There are standard, these are standard internal controls that follow GAAP best practices. If anything improper had occurred, it would have been flagged to the existing oversight mechanisms we already pay for. This district isn't run on trust alone, it's run on layered, auditable financial protocols. So what exactly are we auditing here? Not fraud, not mismanagement. We're auditing a narrative, one that looks a lot more like political theater than fiscal oversight. And meanwhile, the message this sends to current staff is loud and clear. Even if you do everything by the book, you can still be dragged through a show investigation. At a time when the district is already short on trust, staff time, and focus, this is a tone-deaf misuse of both capacity and credibility. If board members have genuine financial concerns, they should ask the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for clarity, not greenlight an audit with no evidentiary basis to suggest there's smoke when we all know there's no fire. Please trust the systems, trust your staff, and stop wasting energy on invented problems.
Steve Brown. Hopefully I can help out a little bit here. I currently serve on the Audit and Investment Committee for the city. I'm not here in that capacity, obviously. But I also have decades of experience. I was a bank CEO, I've been through thousands of audits, I've been through hundreds of targeted audits. I bring this up because I've worked with many, many professional firms, and they are professional. They do a good job. If you guys decide to hire them, then they will do a job, and they'll move through it pretty quickly. Targeted audits are very, very, very common when key players, key people leave. It's not unusual behavior. It's very, very common. And when you look at Laguna Beach, most of the money from taxpayers goes into either the school or the city. Now, the city's dealing with its own audit issues, and those are getting cleaned up, and that's starting to happen. No one is saying there's an audit issue, or I frankly don't think there is. But the reason that you do these kinds of things is to make sure. So if you decide you're going to do a targeted audit, it's not just about looking through the things. That happens, you're going to check through it, and, and they're going to work through the boxes and make sure that the policies and the procedures are followed and those kinds of things. But it's also about the best practice aspect of it, and that's crucially important. This is a very key position. And when you make an announcement that someone of that position has left, it's not internal people that you need to be concerned about, it's external. They start to match up emails, I've seen this all over the place. This is a brutal, brutal situation. They can get inside your systems, and that is something that I think it is important as a board, if you decide you're going to do this, a targeted narrow audit should go very quickly, and they should be able to work through it, and they'll give you some great stuff out the backend that I think could help you with your best practice pieces, where you can tighten things up. It also ensures that you will have all addressed your fiscal responsibilities. And I know that the financial side of it doesn't come up a lot, but this is a critical element of any sort of potential fundraising that may come. I can't stress that enough. This is the same conversation I had in different capacity with the city. It is crucially important for your investment bankers to understand. So if that is anything that anyone's thinking about, it's going to be important. Lots of ways to do this, lots of firms can do it. I think you can get through it fairly quickly. Keep it very targeted, have them work through it, make sure everybody has whatever they're looking for, and you can go through it very quickly. But I, I think at the end, hopefully you won't find anything, and they'll give you three or four great ideas that you can tighten up, and you're done. That's it.
Thank you. Steve McIntosh.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, just to be clear, this, this is, first and foremost, is a, pretty much a process issue. For whatever reason, certain authorities in a system credentials were apparently removed, not removed, certain times. So there's a lot of, a lot of confusion about that apparently here. And it's standard practice, like Steve just said, the standard practice of the terminated employees, regardless of they resign, terminate, whatever, have authorities removed, regardless of their employment level, right away. For example, consider the liability of a terminated employee's access badge continuing, continuing to allow access to secure locations or student areas. It's apparent the offboarding procedure or process was not followed or not even in existence. So when you talk about by the book, we don't even know if there is a book. So obviously, it wasn't followed, and it's not, it's not something to take lightly. Noting that the district has a clean financial audit, which we've heard, has absolutely no bearing on this issue. Again, those are spot checks, it, I've seen hundreds and hundreds of audits. And, and by the way, the last audit was for last year, 2024, anyway. So the issue is not unique to the position of the superintendent and applies to any employee. Obviously, the higher the access or signing authority, the more potential exposure exists. The only way to ensure no controls were violated is to actually audit these activities after the point of termination. This review should not be limited to financial transactions, but inclusive of any action beyond the date of appropriate access. There are likely several actions beyond just check approval that could be a concern from a liability viewpoint. With the board's fiduciary duty and all the high possible liability level, there should be no choice but to conduct a review. It's the only way to mitigate the exposure from failing to disconnect privileges upon termination fully. And it could be a, done privileged information just for the board only, so people were worried about that. But the, at the end of the day, the cost will be minimal compared to the potential exposure and the liability. So I would advise doing it, and I think it's very important to keep a clean audit, like Steve said, as far as this kind of thing. So you don't want that on your record when you go to do any sort of financial thing. So, thank you, that's, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, discussion?
You need a motion before discussion? You need a motion before discussion?
I can make the motion. So I move to approve Action Superintendent Jeff Dixon to enter into a contract with auditors to conduct an audit back to the date of termination, forward to the end of access date of March 30th, so November to March 30th. And, that's it, that's the motion.
Second?
11 until Jan, March 30th.
Howard seconded it.
Unless Joan wants to second it. Yes, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Is there anything that we, it's another question, but it's part of the discussion in, after the questions from the audience. Is there anything in this target audience that we're missing, that we need to include in the, in the scope of work as far as anything that needs to be looked at that isn't going to, that isn't identified here in the background or the purpose? Based on those conversations?
I think it's broad enough that it would be easy to include, and I'd work with the auditor to define what broad means, and I'll inform you once they tell me, but I think it's definitely broad enough to capture.
Okay, and do we have a timeline of when we're trying to start this?
I'd start reaching out to the auditors right away and get proposals and see what sort of scope of service can be defined. And then that'll, I'll go with the lowest qualified proposal, and I'll get a timeline on the activity, and I'll include that in probably next week's update or the following week's update, depending on how long it takes to get the proposals.
Okay. I, I think this is standard practice from, been talking to quite a few people about this. And I, I think we need to have this here as a standard practice for any employee that leaves. And I think it's our duty, our fiduciary duty, to do this and make sure, so I'm in favor.
So unfortunately, there's not a lot that the board does right now that's not part of a larger political context. So we just have to deal with that. We've never done a targeted audit on anyone leaving. There's constant negative narratives about the ex superintendent. We have an upcoming audit, so of course it hasn't been covered yet. And I kind of am very disappointed that this was even agendized without any evidence that we have a problem here. You know, honestly, in the past five months, we've spent countless hours just with board-created chaos, unnecessary work from district staff, sometimes perceived as abusive to teachers and staff, and infuriated parents, and the sum total result of that so far is the change of the name of a course catalog, in, in the catalog. So this item particularly is egregious to me because it publicly questions the integrity, not only of our past superintendent, but also the integrity and the ability of our current district staff. We, it feels very petty and unsupportive, even if you have questions.
Can we move the agenda? Criticizing the board is not appropriate.
I am not done.
Move the agenda, please.
Excuse me. So it feels petty and unsupportive to the people who work in the district every, hard every day on behalf of our students. And if we really want to talk about costs, let me add some additional context. I added up the warrants for the legal fees from December through March for last year and this year. It turns out that in just three months, December 16th through March, a little over three month, months, the new board majority has spent $43,000 more in legal fees over what the previous board spent. It's not a clean calculation, but it comes out to about $150,000 more in annual legal fees this year over what the past board spent. It's all about board dysfunction that has nothing to do with students, including asking for legal advice on whether our staff and teachers have First Amendment rights. It's never with the direction of the board.
This is not about the audit, we need to stick to the audit, please.
This item for me, for an independent audit, which is not standard, is another example of that for me. It's not about the students. If there's evidence of financial malfeasance, I'm the first to want an investigation. I understand how the books work. I'm pretty sure, though, I would do my homework before presenting kind of an incredibly incendiary agenda, agenda item that people are upset about. There's no evidence, so I don't support it, but if you show me evidence that there's a problem and you're not questioning the integrity of our ex superintendent and of our current staff, then that's a different thing, but I would definitely not have handled it like this.
Well, I think that, to your point, Madam Malcheski, there's a lot of districts that would not have handled the departure of the superintendent the way that this district did. And I don't blame the current staff because I understand that they were presented, and it was quite a surprise. So while I respect your opinion, I completely disagree. The fact that this was such an unusual situation only lends it to say, let's just make sure we're real clean, everything is good, so that when we welcome a new leader into our fold, we can assure them that we have caught, crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. I move the agenda to, to vote on this, please.
Yeah, well, Dr. Malcheski raises a lot of interesting issues, and it goes pretty far afield of this. I can't believe this is getting all the discussion that it's getting, but since it has gone far afield, I'll just say that if you talk about legal fees, the problems that we've had in the times we've had to call counsel in to work on extraordinary issues began with our organizational meeting, well, actually began- began with our organizational meeting, well, actually began way before our organizational meeting. It began when the president of the board and the clerk of the board didn't come to the organizational meeting, and the superintendent didn't come to the org. And you know, what's gonna, I, I know what I'm gonna hear next. Let's not go back. Let's not go back. Let's go forward. And I totally agree, and, but you've taken us back, so we need to remember that. Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you when you were talking. I'm speaking right now. Yeah, yeah. So let's take, for example, since we're going back, interesting.
Maybe we should move.
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm a member of the board, and this is my chance to have a discussion. And another member of the board has put some things on the record that I would like to address on the record.
I just was trying to keep it on this topic.
On this topic.
I, I agree. I agree. Board Member Malchuski did not stick to the topic. I don't think that we, I think we need to stick.
All right, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll make my retrospective comments very limited and just say that interesting letter to the editor talked about the fact that there, the legislature recently enacted superintendent transition law that basically created continuity. And there's a suggestion here that we somehow acted inconsistent with that law, but to the contrary. It was the old board that chose not to use the superintendent continuity transition law and terminate the superintendent without continuity and prevented there from being continuity. So that's what the, now, I just want to say, just as the doctor did, I was general counsel of the federal agency with a $10 billion a year budget. And when I went in to take over, the first thing they did, they had all the old signature cards, and they had all the new signature cards laid out. That's part of onboarding. I was responsible for signing off on the disclosure of all deficiency in a $10 billion a year budget. So the, the thing about it is, I know from experience that this is not what it's been characterized as, as having anything to do with suggesting anybody's done anything wrong. We had a non-employee who had access to staff and had access to business information and information that was other, otherwise not public and had signature authorities. The point is, when I was general counsel to a board that was a government agency, a federal government agency, there's no way I would have seen something like this and said, oh, let's just, let's just consider it covered by our regular audit. It would be irresponsible. I would never have allowed my board to have that exposure, even if I was 100% sure that nothing had gone wrong. I would never leave it un, as a matter of record, unaddressed. And I, that's especially true with respect to staff. If I was on this board and I let the staff be exposed to having to explain anything about this at any point, I would be not doing my job for you guys. And so I just don't understand how, there's a lot of things I could say in response to what was said here, but at the request of the chair, I will refrain. And so I'll leave it at that.
I would like to say that I think Mr. Dixon has, is doing a fabulous job. The staff is doing a fabulous job. I just think this is a standard practice, and it's our duty. So are we ready to vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead. Opposed? Moving on to approval, approval of multiple award contract for Epson Workforce Enterprise copiers and printers. We're on B. Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution of the board acting as the legislative body. Agreement for services with food safety systems for training in sanitation and safety procedures. April 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025, in an amount not to see, exceed $14,000.
So thank you. This is a, our, our nutrition staff have required trainings, and a lot of them are in safety and in sanitation, and that's what this firm provides. They come highly recommended from our new supervisor of nutrition services, who has worked with them in the past and seen great results with the staff trainings. You'll note in this item, this is not paid for out of general fund. This comes out of the nutrition fund, Fund 13. And it, as it states in the item, it covers the end of this year, but also covers all next fiscal year. And the trainings will be tailored, tailored specific to the kitchen layouts and the staff needs at each individual site. So it's not just a, a cookie cutter training. It's, it's applied as needed for our staff.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
I don't believe so, no. I think we're all done with speaker cards.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agreement for services with food safety systems for training in sanitation and safety procedures, April 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $14,400?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution 2507, resolution of the Board of Education, acting as the legislative body of Community Facilities District 98-1 of the Laguna Beach Unified School District, authorizing the levy, levy of special taxes within Community Facilities District 98-1 for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Mr. Dixon?
This is an annual requirement for our Community Facilities District. It's the Crystal Cove area of the unincorporated part of our district. What I have provided tonight, just for the benefit of our new board members, is a briefing on what this is, the two documents you're looking at, and why it's required to come to the board annually. So I'm hopeful that is helpful. It can be very complicated. It has to go, it goes back to a, the Melrose Act of 1982 is the reason we do this report. And it's also, when you see the, in the consent item, our administration of the CFD every month, that's what this is in relation to as well. So it's just collecting the, the special taxes on those homes to pay back the, the loan that was initially provided from that CFD.
Questions?
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say COP or CFD?
CFD, Community Facilities District.
I see that here. I was just clarifying. Thank you.
Any questions? Any public comment? Any discussion?
Sorry, I do have one question. How, is, what, is this part of the jet bond that we currently have? It's not, it has anything to do with that, right? So there's no repayment? And the repayment on it is a different timeline?
Yeah, I believe it's 2035.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2507? All in favor?
I need to do a roll call on this. Resolution, I have to do a roll call.
Okay.
Member Morgan?
Aye.
Member Malchuski?
Aye.
Clerk Hills? President Perry?
Aye. Thank you. Approval of the California Multiple Award Contract CMAS for Epson Workforce Enterprise copiers and printers. Mr. Dixon, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, and I'm gonna have our chief technology officer, Mike Morrison, come up and do a very short presentation, I promise. It's very short. But this is exciting for a lot of different reasons. Now, all of our copiers are at end or approaching end of useful life. They need to be replaced. Thanks to Mike and his team, the tech department does a very, very good job monitoring our refresh. So this has been budgeted to replace those copiers. But this is more than just a copier replacement, and I won't take away any of Mike's thunder. I'll, I'm holding back, so please take it away, Mike.
I don't know about thunder with copy machines. I don't know if it, it points to the same thing. But I, President Perry, members of the board, thank you for considering this item. I just want to tell a little bit of the history of it because it was a process, and it makes me proud to be here because it was strategic and thoughtful. And I think it, it's a good story to tell. So we actually met up with Epson about a year ago at a conference, and they, they heard our story about our efforts in sustainability. And they said, you have to meet our CEO, Keith Kratzberg. And I said, why? Well, their efforts aligned with ours, they told us. We didn't know if this is gonna be true, but we went up to Los Alamos to meet their CEO. And I brought with me Gloria Harwood and Mike Rush and Kerry Robé. And we found out that, that as we were sharing our efforts in sustainability, they lined up with what they were doing. And so that was really a, a nice synergy for what they were doing. So the first synergy was Goal One, and we actually started a pilot in October with these copy machines at Top of the World. And we continued that with, with Almoro. So we've been using these for a long time, just trying them out. And then with Goal Three, they have, they, they wanted to help us with our education program. So essentially, they've even partnered with us for a sustainability challenge on May 20th, and our kids are gonna be going up to their headquarters along with other districts, and Gloria initiated that, so it's pretty cool. So this is the, the kind of crazy thing that we're doing. And you have to ask yourself, like, why are we doing this? But we're actually baking plastic onto our paper. So if you look at your paper right now, we're, we're taking microplastic and baking it on. When you hear a copy machine heat up, and it, and you, you can smell that smell, that's the smell of us baking plastic on a paper. So to me, the question is, why? Like, why are we doing this? And we, I'd asked myself that, and I think I'm asking you that as a board tonight, is can we come up with a better solution? And Epson asked that same question, and they said, we're not gonna do that anymore. So about 10 years ago, they stopped doing this. They're not baking plastic on the paper. This just shows how much plastic we bake onto paper every year as a nation. So it just kind of gives you an idea of how many, the equivalent in bottles and pounds of plastic that we're putting on our paper. The, the, there were several parts. One was the, the fact that, that of the plastic toner that convinced us that we needed to bring this to you. The other was energy consumption. So they actually use quite a bit less energy. They actually use a standard port for like 110 instead of 220 because they're not having to heat up, which is good. The amount of plastic that they use in the actual copy machine is less because there's less parts. The bag that holds the ink is what they use is less than a toner cartridge. So everything is less as far as plastic. So we would be saving on that waste. And so the energy savings alone for our district, this is an estimate, but would be about 75% savings in energy for our district. Along with this program, we, you guys have already approved a software called PaperCut. And PaperCut monitors our printing and, on our copy machines and our printers, and does nudging for people. Like, if you're printing a lot, it'll say, are you sure you want to print one side in? Shouldn't you print two? Which is really good. And it does follow me printing. So like, if you're printing something confidential, you can go and go up to the copy machine, put in your number, and then print, rather than send it over and have to rush over and grab that item. So, yeah, so the next step would be, they, they want to have us as a strategic partner. The more it took us to pilot this, the less the price became. So they reduced that. But we're excited about providing the opportunity for you guys to vote on this.
This is great. I'm embarrassed. I didn't know that toner was plastics. So it's great. I support this. I, it's amazing.
Well, I need the ink. The cartridges were always very sought after, but I had no idea the ink itself was. So how, where is, do you have a picture of one or how it works and how the ink gets on the paper?
They look exactly like a copy machine. There's nothing fancy about the way they look.
But inside?
It's ink, using ink instead of toner.
Oh, it's just, okay. Oh, okay. So it's ink. So it's a big version of the home printer?
Yep.
That has evolved. Okay. Because I have an Evolution printer at home. Well, you know what it's about.
Any other questions? Are there any?
Inkjet. Yes.
Or toner cartridges. We're going back to inkjet printing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do they have, what, what is the recycle program on the current printers and, or on the current copiers? And like, how big is our fleet, and what do they tend to do with those? They don't become landfill, do they? Or do they assemble them and refurbish them for inkjet? Or how does that work?
They'll take them away and use them either for parts or resell for people that may not have them, but they're pretty much end of life. So they're gonna take them away from us at, by giving us a discount. So they're gonna, they're gonna get, we, we had a really good value on them placed on the discount, so.
Are there any comment cards? Okay. Discussion? This is amazing. This is so fantastic for where we're trying to go. Do you know any more about the Sustainability Challenge, what they'd be doing?
I'm not, I, I think Chad maybe could address that. You know, I'm gonna go.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have all the details, but we have a couple, we have a group of students that have been working on this all spring, since, I want to say, December, January. They meet a couple of times a week, and what they're essentially doing is an audit of the high school. They're looking at all things from energy to transportation, all kinds of waste. And then they're gonna present that along with other high schools with some solution, potential solutions. And so there'll be people there obviously evaluating it, and then I believe there might be opportunities for some small scholarships as well as internships based with teams that finish at the top.
Very cool. Thank you.
And it doesn't hurt to have the CEO behind us in this project. He thinks we're a strategic partner. And so they're inviting us up to visit in June. So you, we'd probably be allowed to invite a, a couple of board members to come with us. So we'll get to, to do that leadership, leadership summit.
Thanks. Okay. So? Do we have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much. Action items, instructional services. Approval of the three-year renewal of Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Laguna Beach for a jointly operated adult education program in an amount not to exceed 95% of the annual program grant. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. So, yes, you heard, they mentioned very briefly yesterday at our, our meeting with the city council that we just recently renewed, they approved the recent renewal, a three-year renewal of our MOU for adult education. So I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to share a little bit of the background because we're bringing that same item forward here as well, that MOU. So the, our, we get an annual grant from the state for adult education for approximately $135,000, give or take, depending on the year. And then that serves about 85 students. Obviously, that fluctuates on the year as well. And then the whole intention around the state adult grant is really around career readiness skills. And I'll talk here on the next slide about the types of courses that we offer. So we partner with the City of Laguna Beach, and this will be, would be renewing our third three-year MOU. So we've partnered with them for the last six years. We've provided some form of, of ESL or English as a Second Language. That's still the term that they use. We've provided some form of that for, for many, many years, at least the last 10 years that I'm, that I'm aware of. And I believe many years before that. We've partnered with the city around those classes for the last six years with them. One of our teachers leads that work, Jeff Dipple here at the middle school, who also teaches Spanish. So he helps, work, works with the city around those classes. They've taken out a variety of forms over the years. They've, some have been in person, some have been virtual. They're currently doing some classes over at the ranch for people who work there as well. And then we've also done some forms of work, what they call workforce reentry classes with the city. And that might be things around career skills and resume and interviewing. That's taken a few variety of forms over the years. Typically able to offer that every other year to, just based on enrollment, a number, an interest. And then three years ago, a little bit over, about three and a half years ago, we started partnering with College and Career Advantage. And we partner with them over a couple, we had a hotel hospitality core class that eventually didn't have enough entrants. But currently this year, we have cybersecurity. We added an artificial intelligence class. They get certifications for those. And then we also added a vet tech class as well. And so those are all in partnership with College and Career Advantage. And between all those classes, we currently have about 85 students that are taking those, adult students. And then last thing just wanted to share, we're a part of the South Orange County Consortium for Adult Education. And it's really a good, it's a partnership that we're with. There's Tustin Unified and Irvine Unified, but also there's Irvine Valley and Saddleback Valley Colleges. And so we partner with all these regional centers who also get grant funds to support our adult learners throughout the county. And so these are the ones in the South County that we are a part of. And so while there may be, there is a variety of courses. We have a limitation of what we're able to offer based on the funding. They offer a variety of more. But the ultimate goal of them to get more career opportunities and advance forward. So our staff is recommending to approve the renewal of our three-year MOU with the city for the adult education classes.
Questions? Okay, I have a couple. One, some, one of our citizens was watching the city council meeting and saw that little interchange, I guess. And this person said she knows quite a few adults that probably would benefit from this program. And she wanted to know who she would get in touch with to help. Would it be us or would it be the city that would?
There's a variety, there's a good question. And thank you for asking that. So there's a variety of ways they can do that. We have some information on our website under our instructional services page where it lists our adult education program. The city also, those programs are through the city. They promote those, those are there as well. And then College and Career Advantage has those classes as well. Those are three main areas. You definitely can reach out to my office as well. Instructional Services will point them in the right direction. And I, knowing Jeff Dipple, he would say email him directly. He'd be happy to walk them through any process as well.
Okay. And where are the classes, the cybersecurity and the other classes given? Vet tech?
The cybersecurity ones are over at the Capo, no, sorry, take that back. The, let me put that back up there.
I think there's a cybersecurity at San Clemente.
Yeah, sorry. Cybersecurity is at San Clemente right now. We've talked about moving some of that over here.
Okay.
That has been, they've had a version of that for a long time at the high school level as well. And so they have all the equipment. But now there's some versions of the equipment that are a little bit more mobile, where you didn't have to have the full class setup. And so we've talked about moving some of that over here. That one is at San Clemente. The vet tech is at Capo High School and then set up over there. But then they go out into actual vets and to do some of like the lab-based stuff.
So is this all set up for, for instance, people who are learning English?
These ones, the college and career advantage ones are?
Anybody.
Anybody.
Okay.
The ESL ones are for students that would need to learn English. What's really nice about that program is Mr. Dipple makes it applicable to whatever they're doing. So it's very much a, they're connected to their work or their workforce, which is why he's always reaching out to local partners to like say, I can provide this support in your job area. So the vocabulary that they're learning is very applicable and will help them promote or get new job opportunities. With the ideal of like if they want, they do well in these, we try to use that consortium to, if they want to go to, they want to obviously career opportunities, but they may want to go to community college as well and continue to advance. And so we try to make those opportunities and counsel them on the different things that they can do after successfully completing the classes.
Thanks.
I actually had a couple of questions. Are these the regular school year? These are in a summer program? These are all throughout the school year, correct? And it follows the school year calendar?
They mostly follow the school year calendar. The ESL classes, they offer like a smaller, a shorter window of a class in the summer that starts in late July usually or early August. So they do some, a handful of classes start in the summer, but the rest follow our school year.
And I would assume the ones that through the City of Laguna Beach, there's a fee involved? And the CCA, is that part of like our registration as a high school student? Or is there a cost involved for non-students?
The ones that are funded through the grant are entirely free. These are free to anybody. So these ones are all grant funded, which is true in all the other partners that were in that consortium. Like all those classes that are funded through that are also free.
That's amazing. That's awesome. Thank you.
And I do want to add one more thing that I didn't say with the vet tech one. That one of the reasons we added that, because there's almost no other program like that in Orange County. And it's a high needs position, a high need job field. And so if there are people who have an interest and are looking for fields where there's a need to like the people are looking for jobs, like that's a, that's a high need field. And you get certified when you're done with that to go work at a veterinarian office.
And that one's filled up? Are there any green cards? Any more discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the three-year renewal of the Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Laguna Beach for a jointly operated adult education program in an amount not to exceed 95% of the annual program grant?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Approval of Memorandum of Understanding, the MOU with College and Career Advantage to provide teachers to facilitate career and technical education sessions during the 2025 LEAD Program in an estimated amount of $29,000. And this is kind of what Dr. Canenberg talked about a bit, right?
Yep, that's exactly it. We offer a variety of career-focused, career-area classes in our LEAD Program and have for many years. Last year, there was a couple of classes that we know students had interest in. Young entrepreneurs, fashion design, intro to sewing that were very popular. And so we knew that there were some teachers in CCA that could facilitate those really well. And so we brought them on. And now we've expanded that to even more classes this year. So we would need a MOU to hire those teachers for our LEAD Program and pay them to do that, to work with us for those two weeks.
Questions?
Are we using, so these are our teachers that are being used?
These are teachers that are CCA teachers. So like the fashion design, for example, like that they're hired by CCA to teach those classes during the school year. And then we're doing, we're doing MOU so that we can essentially pay them for the summer.
Okay, and how does that compare for like our site leaderships? Like if they're summer school principal, coordinator?
We pay them at our rate to do our, so the same as what we're paying any, one of our own teachers that we pay the CCA teachers the exact same rate.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any speaker cards? Any discussion? Did you have something?
No.
No, okay. Is there a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with College and Career Advantage to provide teachers to facilitate career and technical education sessions during the 2025 LEAD Program in an estimated amount of $29,000? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the proposal from Leveraged Learning Group to provide reflective learning walks and leadership support for administrators and teachers at Laguna Beach High School for the 2025-26 school year in the amount of $39,000. Dr. Mayberry, we look forward to hearing from you about this.
Thank you. Another one here for next school year. So the LBHS staff was something that they were looking for last year. So this is year, this would be year two of our partnership with them. They would like to continue working with Leveraged Learning Group for the school year. This helps build capacity for instructional leadership, not only for the administrators, but also for teachers. And so they do that for a variety of ways of communities of practice, cross-department collaboration, these reflective learning walks, and really building the capacity for continuous improvement, enhancing effective teaching practices. They did a variety, they did, I think, seven or eight visits this year. And the teachers were really, had great feedback. I wanted to continue to work for them. It's just a unique opportunity to bring in some expertise to help facilitate those experiences for teachers, those professional learning. It also helps, they work through not just the things that the department's goals, but they might work on stuff related to their profile as well as like the recommendations within the WASC approval of report. And they have that partnership with them to reflect and grow as leaders. And so they would like to continue with that partnership for next school year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is it just at the high school? Or are they looking at?
This one's just for the high school. We've talked, based off of the feedback, how receptive staff was around it. Like we've talked of like, is this somewhere we can potentially do some work at the middle school or do some work at the district office leaders around this? So we haven't moved that forward yet. But the high school was very adamant they wanted to move forward with it for next year.
So I've heard a lot about it, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So this group comes in and walks with our staff and identifies?
They're supporting them in developing their teaching practice. So that one way they do, one of the main ways they do that is they work with, they go visit other classrooms and they work with them to look at the student learning experience. And then have essentially an inquiry-based approach to like looking at what students are learning, what, how we might shift the experience or what's working well. And so it becomes this very much almost like what we would call a lesson study approach, where they look at a lesson and like, okay, this was the intention and what seemed to work well? What might we tweak next time? It's a really impactful way for professional learning. One of the, on research side, it's one of the most effective ones that we can support.
Well, I think that's a great approach. How can we, what can we do better? I like that. What do we do good? What can we do better? And the staff has really embraced it. And you heard, I've heard nothing but good things from those that I've talked to about it. So if it's, what is it? Is it a process of doing it a couple of years at the high school before we can take it to the middle or the elementary school? Is there interest there?
Definitely. I'm hearing good things back from people in my department that have been doing it. I haven't had a chance to do it myself yet. Just, it's been busy. But everything I've heard is very good responses, going and seeing what other teachers are doing, see how they're doing in their class. And it's good to learn from each other and see what they're doing and what best practices are happening in other classes. So I've heard very good reports on it.
In talking to you about it, Dr. Mayberry, I was really convinced it was a great thing. And I love that we're offering it's like a hands-on professional development for our high school teachers. But there were a few questions from others, and I think you can easily explain this, about why you and Dr. Canenberg aren't just doing this.
So there's a variety of reasons. So you know, we, one of our highest priorities for our staff is to continue, and for myself too, is to continue to grow and evolve and get better at our craft and learning. Just the same thing we ask of our students, right? And schools are not just learning for students, they're learning for everybody. And so having an instructional coaching program like this, there's a high level of skill because you're asking people about their personal craft if you're going into their classroom. There's definitely a high level of skill. I've had some training instructional coaching. So I'm sure I would feel comfortable going in there and talking to teachers about that. And I do that. But the difference between this is it's building the skills of the other teachers with someone who does this with lots of other districts. And when I come in there or when Dr. Allman comes in there, as much as we say, look, we're just here to learn, we're here to help, we're here to support, it feels different. It will always feel different. He's their evaluator. We, you know, we try to build that relationship, but it will always feel a little different. Then we bring someone from the outside that's facilitating that when you're in someone's classroom. Because it is a, you know, learning is a very social, personal experience. And so we think it's important to have someone come from, that has an expertise in this and help facilitate that.
I, thank you. Perfect. That, I agree. And I know one thing that has happened when I was involved in this is it brought about some camaraderie with teachers too, because you were excited about what they were doing and complimenting them. And I think that's all helpful. So are there any green cards? Any other discussion? Okay. So what we're looking at is for a motion to approve the Memorandum of Under, what, we're looking to approve the proposal for Leveraged Learning Group to provide reflective learning walks and leadership support for administrators and teachers of Laguna Beach High School for the 25-26 school year in the amount of $39,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All in favor? Passes? Thank you. Approval of contract with Orange County Department of Education to provide professional development and assistance with selecting elementary math materials to pilot in the 25-26 school year in an amount not to exceed $42,000. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. So we've worked with Orange County Department Ed and their elementary math leadership support program for several years, doing lots of little workshops along the way. Last, we did a pilot group two years ago with a group of 12 students to kind of look through some of the practices and go into classrooms and do lesson studies. Last, this year, as part of getting ready for the California Frameworks and the new instructional materials, we helped develop, we worked together to develop a vision with staff. And Orange County Department of Ed is working with several other districts in the county on this as well. And part of the, when you look at new instructional materials, what's really, really important is that you have a common vision for the math learning experience and the best practices that our students should be doing. So when you get to that point and you have that clear vision, which is what they've been supporting us with this year, that makes selecting the materials that much more effective because you have your altogether previous, there's other versions of adoptions, but the one that's been around forever is like, we just look at the materials, we pick the one that looks the best, and then you try to see if it implements it. And sometimes it sticks, sometimes it doesn't. This one is much more about building a community of teachers to look at those key practices, go into classrooms, look at some of our data, look at best practices of other districts. So we've gone to visit a lot of other districts that are in the similar stage where we are as well. And then this spring, we're looking at four different materials right now to like potentially pilot in the fall. And then at that point, once we start, we would start the, Orange County Department Ed would support us with that pilot process. And obviously eventually it would make its way to the board and more public input along the way. That's probably more like in the middle of next year. But they would look, they would support us continuing that process to pilot the materials in the fall and provide professional learning with our staff.
Thank you. Questions? Any green cards?
How many kids are involved in the pilot? You said that you had a group of like 12 kids, I think you said?
Oh, sorry. It was 12 teachers two years ago, not kids. 12 teachers that we went through six days of professional learning together around looking at some key practices. And it was a way to try some things out, saying, so that we at the end of the year could say, okay, now let's think about what would this look like for all staff, right? So at the elementary level, that's 42 to 45 teachers, depending on the year. But we did a group of 12 to say, kind of to get out in front and say, what seemed to work? And if we implement this with everybody, because it's different doing with a group that chooses to be there versus a group that like, we're going to do this with all teachers, right? We're all going to move forward together. There's just different dynamics to that and different approaches to bring our community together of educators. And so they provided a really great level of advice on like what would work well with teachers, which included some professional learning days, some visits to schools we went to this year. Some teachers went there, some teachers did both. So we had a really good variety of things this year to kind of bring us all together and kind of create that common vision for what we want with our materials for next year.
Any cards? No. I really appreciate that you're looking at it now so people can start in the fall that are going to be piloting. I think that makes a big difference. Thanks.
Yeah, we're, one of you, as you, sure you know, sometimes, often these decisions are made like in May or June around what material you want to adopt. And the challenge with that is that then that means the PD, teachers want to start the year with it, right? So now they're coming into the summer, we're cramming it in the three days or four days before school starts, right? So what we're thinking strategically as a leadership group, we want to make that decision and bring it to the board and bring it to the public for review in the middle of the year, make a decision, make the purchase. And then we have all spring to do any training, leaving teachers the summer to do what they typically do and relax. And then we're ready to go at the start of the year.
I think that's brilliant. Okay. So is there a motion to approve the contract with the Orange County Department of Education to provide professional development and assistance with selecting elementary math materials to pilot in the 25-26 school year in an amount not to exceed $42,000? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Action items for the superintendent. Approval of April 24th, 2025 Special Board Meeting Minutes. As I and member Kelly were not able to attend this meeting, I'll abstain from voting on minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any speaker cards for those wishing to speak on consent items?
Well, there's a card here, but there's no name on it. So I don't know.
Okay, that must be it.
So.
It's, obviously this is regarding the bus passes. As was noted last night at the joint meeting, the district currently spends over $35,000 per pupil, which is fantastic. But in the current economic environment, even a modest increase in expenses for some families can prove daunting. I understand the district's need to recoup the shortfall in state funding, but as the board is currently exploring transportation options for about 15 to 20 CCA students at a cost of $400,000, perhaps that money could be better allocated on the hundreds of kids who use our transportation services. Just a thought.
We're looking at other options that are free for that.
Can I just ask a question? How much is it going up, the cost? I looked at this and it didn't register.
Anywhere from $2 per pass up to $15 per pass, depending on the type of ride.
So on an annual, see, I see the current, oh, I see, the current is 230. So what, the proposed, it would go up to 245, I see.
Do any board members have any other questions?
Yeah.
Or would you like to pull any items?
The, the warrants under F, what's the bulk of that?
Do you want to pull that item for further discussion?
Just the warrants we get every meeting.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item C through P of the consent calendar? Or do we want some more discussion? Second. All in favor? Was that too quick? Do you want, do you have more questions, Mr. Hill?
I just want to say, I'm not going to pull item C, but I'm going to note that there were some questions raised and there were some, some statements made that at some point need to be revisited. But because it's, the night is getting long and we need to move on, I'm just going to note for the record that at some point in the future, I'm going to try to bring forward some of the unresolved and incomplete discussions that took place at the April 17th meeting. Other than that, I'm ready to vote.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Are the minutes incorrect or you just want to refer to topics? Just so I know.
Well, there would be a point of order about some of the statements made. But no, I'm going to have to address it later, not make any, it wouldn't be correcting anything in the minutes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Adjournment, next regular meeting, May 22nd, 2025? Nope. Regular meeting. I know we have a meeting Saturday. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.